The hour having arrived and the quorum being present, I declare this March 12th meeting of the Northwood Board of Selectmen officially in session. We will begin tonight's meeting, as we always do, with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it if we would all would remain standing for just a moment while Mr. Mazuko says a word or two about a recently deceased town employee. Mr. Mazuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sad note to report to the community that Tim Fucci, who had started off as a meterman and electrician with the Light Department and for the last 25 years served as our electrical inspector, passed away unexpectedly on Monday. So I'd ask just for a moment of silence for Tim.
May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mazuko.
Also, his father was Dominic Fucci, who served as a member of the Board of Selectmen and as a member of the Towns North School Committee. Sincere sad wishes to his mother, Porta.
Very good. Tonight, as you can see, we're beginning an hour earlier than usual, and that's because we have our annual budget hearings for the various town departments and a couple of other matters at the end of the, at the end of our budget hearings, too. So we are on a schedule here. We'll move along as expeditiously as we can. So I'd first like to welcome our Director of Finance, Mr. McQuade, to get us started here tonight with an overview. Mr. McQuade, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney and members of the board. So I'll try to make this as brief as possible because I know you have a, quite a busy schedule. So this handout, while it's lengthy, I'm not going to talk in too much detail. So I handwrote some page numbers on there, so I'll use that as a reference. The first page is basically a summary of our revenue for the budget, so we show the history, fiscal '17, '18, '19. We're in the middle of fiscal '20. You'll see across the top that we had original proposals and then we had changes on what we call the second pass and then the third pass. And soon we'll be getting numbers together for a fourth pass. And one of the changes that's coming on the fourth pass is that at the last budget balancing meeting, Mr. Slater proposed that we use free cash to pay for the expenses related to the Forbes Mansion. So there was $400,000 sum of interest payments and $75,000 of maintenance. So by using free cash to pay for those specific items, on the theory that they're only going to be here for this one year, it actually, you know, creates, lessens the overall deficit to the town. And they, the committee also voted that the school committee should use that money to help balance their budget. So page one is the total revenues, $195,000. Page two is the budgets related to that. You can see we still have a $431,000 deficit. That belongs to the school department. They are meeting Wednesday night to make their final cuts and, and our revenue adjustments. And then Thursday night, they'll be meeting with the Finance Commission at their budget hearing. Page three just kind of summarizes how we, we divide up what available money there is on a 55-45 basis, and then we make some adjustments, like the one I just mentioned, where 100% of that new money is going to the schools. So in other words, we increased the target budget that they have available, that they're trying to reach. And then pages four through 11, I think, are kind of details of the budget. And general government is the majority of those pages, pages four, five, through, four through nine. And you'll see that we had, the original budget was the one that starts with the Selectmen budget of $163,056. And then we had two passes of things that we changed to end up, in this case, for $141,0812. That particular line went down because some personnel changes. But basically, so this was the, an attempt to show you the history. So these numbers are based on our old system, AMC, and we're in the process, as everyone knows, of converting to Tyler Munis. And so the, the blue book is in the new format, the Tyler Munis format. But this is the traditional way we've looked at it, so it's, and, and we're not fully up and running on, on Munis yet. So if you go to, just flip to page nine for a minute. Based on the 55-45 formula, 45% going to general government. The general government budget target is $36,391,346. Over the course of those two passes, the general manager and, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen, have made cuts of $1,020,837. So, so the general government is at a balanced budget state at $36,391,346. The next section is the, the school budget. This, this still actually reflects on page 10 that they have a $940,000 deficit, but as I just pointed out on the front page, that, that's going to be reduced by that free cash. The next section is our shared costs, which total $42 million. The big unknown still there is that, you know, we, we just got the rates for the health insurance, and some of the plans, like the plan I'm on, Unicare Plus, had absolutely no increase, which is fantastic. Unfortunately, 55% of our employees are on Harvard Pilgrim, and they had about approximately an 8% increase. So we have to go through the, this open enrollment in the month of May. We think, because virtually the plans are identical between those two plans in particular, Harvard Pilgrim's 30% higher in general. So we, we think we'll have some migration away from Harvard Pilgrim, just because people don't want to have to pay more money for the, pretty much the same service. So, so we have 5% increase in the budget. If you take 55% of the, of the 8% increase, that, that, you know, would tend to put it higher than 5%. But I think it's going to, in the end, be a pretty good number that we have budgeted. And then the next section is the, all the utilities. So, so that's kind of the detail of the budget. I just, Mr. Maloney asked me to present a summary of the debt budget, so that starts on page 12 and 13. These are the, just the summary pages that are going to go into the book. And if you flip to page 13, much, much of our debt is related to our utility. So we often look at what's, what's affecting the tax rate. And for fiscal 2020, we have $3,687,000 debt service. And because we don't put into this projections of what we might borrow in the future, naturally over time, the, the amount of debt that we're, that we show when the schedule drops off. So one, two, three, four years from now, instead of paying $3,687, if we borrowed no more money, we'd be paying $1,543. So it's kind of a natural cycle of things. Things drop off. Mr. Mazuko has a capital plan that will add some of these back, that has money for both the schools and the town. And then ratio-wise, kind of good fiscal management, in general, you don't want to have debt service higher than 5% of your budget. And our nonutility budget is $124 million, and this debt service is $3,600,000. So we're actually at 2.9, so we actually have a lot more borrowing capacity to still be within prudent guidelines. So, but of course, you know, you never borrow for, not even allowed, even if you'd want to, you never borrow for operations. So only for things that have a life of five years or more, the capital items. And our long-term goal is to get more of the recurring capital items into the operating budget. This year, we have four police cruisers in there, but like, for instance, I think the number's $287,000. We have, we're borrowing for equipment on, say, the DPW, which in an ideal world, since they're recurring stock, you know, you're always having to replace that type of equipment, you'd like to see it in your operating budget. But because of the, you know, the long-term crunch, we're still on the outside on that. But I think definitely a goal. And then I just wanted to make you aware of an annual letter we get from the auditor. So after the audit's done, and they, they gave us a clean opinion on the audit, that we were in good shape, they, if there's major internal control problems, then they would issue us a management letter that says, boy, you really have these internal control deficiencies. And we don't have any of those, so they, they send us what they call a side letter. So there's, there's about seven or eight items in here that, that more suggestions on how we could improve things. And I've actually, actually just started the process of sending an email to all these department heads to send them a copy of this letter, and then I'm asking for their responses. And then we'll meet as a group, and Mr. Mazuko and I will craft a response to the auditor. That's all I wanted to say tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
A couple of things from me first. Mr. McQuade, thank you very much for the comprehensive nature of the report. I'll kind of work backwards here. The side letter from Melanson Heath seems to be in, generally in concert with what you usually get every year from, from Melanson Heath about, you know, kind of things you can do to improve your controls. Some of these, I assume, will sort of just get done as a result of the new ERP system anyway. Isn't that true? There are greater controls in it?
It should help us. But for instance, one here is talking about the Recreation Department, how they handle petty cash, and, you know, they suggest a procedure that, you know, for one, one person and then another person reviewing and signing off. And I've already got a response from the Rec Department Leader that as soon as the auditors pointed this out during the year, they started this new practice.
Okay.
So many of these things we're, we're already working on, so, and they're all kind of a relatively minor nature. The only other big thing I should say, Mr. Maloney, I, I think I passed out last week, I think I sent you the, the audits. There was a change from the, in Government Accounting Standards Board. They issued Gatsby '74 and '75, which changed the way cities and towns report OPEB liability. So OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which essentially is the cost that we, as a town, promise to pay employees in the future for retire, not for retirement benefits, for health insurance and dental for when they retire. And right now, all the cities and towns pay that cost, which in our case, I forget how much it is, $5 million a year or so. We're paying out of current operations, but, you know, accounting gurus want us to put away money, just like we do with, with pension plans. So we've begun that process, but because of the way they changed the reporting, you know, our balance sheet went from a, a net position of $41 million to a net position of negative $60 million. And if you look at every city and town, they're all in the same boat. So it's an accounting change. The reading agencies know it's a long-term problem, but they're, they're not considering it a credit event. They, they just understand it's a difference in bookkeeping. And what the credit agencies are looking for is that we are contributing to the, and that we have a plan. So currently, our plan is we put $250,000 a year in there. We have approximately $2 million in the fund, whereas our liability's $147 million. So you can see, like, other cities and towns were quite short. Our pension obligation should be completed around 2029, 2030. And whether it's right then or soon after, we're more than 100% funded, some of the excess money we put into pension will be shifting over to the OPEB fund. And the other thing that the Finance Commission recommends, and we have been doing most years, is when, if, at the end of, say, this fiscal year, it's possible we might have $300,000 left on, in the budget. So that, if, if we do, they're going to recommend at the special town meeting that we put that money towards OPEB, because it's all related to health insurance. So, and any effort you make in that direction.
$300,000 to what account?
It's in the OPEB, it's in the group insurance, it's in the health, group health insurance account. It's a $13 million budget item, and so because people, we make the budget and then open enrollments just finishing, you can never get it exact, and this changes during the year. But if there's excess, two years ago, we gave the excess to the schools because they, they were in need. So I think the plan this year is to put a, put a, an article on the special, and if we have any extra that we, the Finance Commission's going to recommend, it goes to OPEB.
Okay. Very good. Questions for Mr. McQuade?
Not an major.
Mr. Donnie?
Thank you. Hello, Mr. McQuade. Thank you for your help. You said that we have borrowed 2.9% and it's safe for us to borrow 5%?
On debt service, sorry. Debt service in relation to our budget.
Right. So we, that's good that we're only borrowing almost half of what we could. That's, that seems to be good. So this whole budget, there's a lot of talk about stabilization fund. Is that reflected in this budget?
So we have a, a normal stabilization fund, where we have approximately $4.8 million in there. You may recall, at one point, we had $6 million in, in the stabilization fund. And about seven years ago now, I think we took $3 million out as a down payment on the DPW. So with the plan that we would put money back every year to repay that into the fund, so we've been repaying that. This year's budget contains $428,000 going into the stabilization fund. That would be fully paid off in a couple of years. My recommendation would be that we would continue to make that payment every year because one of the things that affects your credit rating the most is what we have in reserves. So, you know, some cities and towns in the Midwest have reserves of 14%, 15%. And, you know, cities and towns in Massachusetts generally have 5% to 10%. And I think we're closer to the 5%. So towns that have AAA, AAA ratings usually have extreme amounts of reserves.
So we have not been hurt by our rating that we have now, have we?
No, we've had the same rating for quite a while, AA+.
AA+ is very good.
It's very good.
About five years. We've had, well, we're not about five years ago, from AA.
That's a good thing.
It's very good.
So also.
Only one, one step below the best.
So that's, I think that's excellent. So on page 11, could you please be kind enough just to talk about that a little more?
On page 11?
Yes. It's eight of eight on your, on the printout, but it's 11 on the whole package.
Yeah, handwritten number.
Handwritten number 11.
Thank you. Okay, and you wanted me to?
Just talk, just explain that a bit better.
Explain that debt service that's related to the tax burden?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this year, in fiscal 2020, the budget that we're proposing, we will have debt payments of $3,687,000. So of our total $195 million budget, $4 million is related to operations of the schools, et cetera. And on top of that, we have a.
Sorry, Director Tom, can I ask a question? Are we, are we all looking at the same?
No.
Page 11. Mr. Donnie, we refer to the broadband and the MWRA budgets?
That, right, the bottom line, the 193.
Okay, the budget total, sorry. So, Tom, she's, page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have two different sets of page numbers.
I'm sorry. So what, could you ask your question again?
Could you please be kind enough to, just to go over that?
This page?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is it just the budget total?
The total, right. How the bottom line, really.
Yeah. So the budget proposal originally, so this is what shared costs were submitted, and school commits, school committees submitted their budget, general manager submitted his budget, and all the utilities. So the total of all those budgets submitted was $196 million. And we only have available $192 million. So basically, we had a collectively cut, four and a half, almost four and a half million dollars. So we went through a process, and you can see, the first pass, we cut $584,000. The second pass, we cut $2,613,070. And I shouldn't necessarily say they're all cuts. It's a combination of increased revenues and cuts, cuts to the, to the budget.
But if you look through the first eight pages that you submitted, when we go department by department, things look very good when you go across, you know?
Yeah.
Things look really, really good. For example, if on page one, no, let's go to page one of eight, handwritten page number four. If you, if you follow those lines across, they look good to me, Mr. McQuade. They don't look as bad as $4 million's had to be cut.
Yeah, that's because the, we, we basically level-funded most items, and then we just increased the salaries by the amount that was contractually obligated. So we had more of a problem on the revenue side than we did on the, on the expense side. But the, and the general government, Mr. Mazuko's orders to all the people submitting budgets was to submit flat budgets unless you could justify something that was really needed. So like, one of the things that we originally put in higher was roads, fixing roads, because we, we know there's a need there. But we cut that back $350,000 to help balance the budget.
But as of last year, it's at least the same amount as we did this year?
The roads, yeah.
So it really wasn't a cut, it was just a request for a cut, a request for an increase?
Right. As you, as you, everyone knows, budgets are about choices. So if you have $1,000 in, you know, one year, you may say, well, we, we really like having this item, but we really need this item. So it's, it's, budgets are about choices.
So then how does that whole concept of this five-year plan for the capital outlay fit into this?
The five-year plan for, for the cap, the 70-page capital outlay plan?
It's not reflected in this at all.
It's not, not reflected in this at all.
No.
It's at the back of the budget.
And then, when we, when we borrow money, though, on, on the, that plan, they don't actually go into budget. So they go into a, a pool of accounting for that particular item, and then we spend it up to the amount of that expenditure. If we bought something, though, out of free cash, then it becomes an operational budget. It goes into the section within each department's capital section, so it doesn't distort the overall budget.
So then that would increase the 2.9, if we did?
It will long-term, but it won't this year, because whatever we do in the capital budget, what, what we do is the treasurer won't borrow until January, and then when they borrow in January, if they did a full borrowing that involved later paying interest and principal, the interest would be due six months from then. And so if you borrow January 15th, it would be due July 15th, which would be fiscal '21. So it wouldn't affect this year's budget, but it would affect the projection going forward. But since no one's voted that at a town meeting yet, we don't put this in the debt schedule. We did put, we did put an, an amount in the five-year projection on the assumption that debt service would be level-funded over time.
Thank you, Mr. McQuade. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donnie. So the bottom line here is that you look at Budget 2019 for General Government, and you look at Proposed Pass Three for General Government, and our budget's actually going down slightly on the General Government side. Now, there is a footnote there, which has to do with an accounting adjustment we're making vis-à-vis the Light Department, which we'll discuss a little bit later, to, to the amount of $350,000, $349,000. But basically, we're going down.
Although the, the historical number for '19 also does include the capital outlay budget.
Okay.
That, not the borrowed things, but the things that were not borrowed.
Okay. All right.
So in fact, the General Government went up a little bit.
Okay.
And one of the benefits of changing our accounting system over, our software over, is that over time, we'll be able to get a better trend analysis for our operating budgets to get a better idea of what it's costing to operate departments separate from that capital, we'll have better data available.
One of, one of the best things in the new system, which will become operational around January of 2020, is it's a, it's part of the human resource system, and it's called Position Control. So we'll be able to put every position in town and be able to project out for five years by position, how many, you know, how much the expenditure's going to be. Schools especially, this is a really invaluable thing. We've been attempting to do this on spreadsheets for a number of years, and the schools are really looking forward to that, and I think it'll help us, too. And I think long-term, you know, we, we'll be able to not only budget the expenses, but we'll be really budgeting the, the revenue, whereas right now, we do it in total.
Okay. Anything further from Mr. McQuade? Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I, I don't look at, look at it as cherry as it might sound. We have a balanced budget, as we say, but that balanced budget comes at the expense of not having the department heads put in their recommendations of things they thought that their departments might need to move forward in services to the community. They also mean we've cut out well over $1 million, which are things that should be in the budget, that are going to have to either be done through free cash borrowing, where we do have the capacity to borrow additional. However, those aren't things that are, in good practice, should be borrowed for, they should be in the budgets, as Mr. McQuade and Mr. Mazuko said. And we're also choosing not to do some additional things that we had started planning, like last year, that we had started planning additional money for roads, and now we've had to cut that back. We can't continue those forward, progressive, whatever words you want to use, actions to do the things that need to be done in town, because we've had to cut the budget. So we're balanced, but not without sacrifices. Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing, too, one other item, too, of Mr. Plasko, we talked about is gradually increasing the snow and ice appropriation, which we've been doing for about five years. We do get some of that in here anyway, in this, in this upcoming budget, about $50,000 to go from $625 to $675. At least if we can get to the point where the, the upcoming appropriation is equal to, say, the average of the past five years or something, you've got some, we're still below that now, though.
And the concern with something like that is when will we reach that average at the slow pace we're going up? We also didn't necessarily have any major cost drivers this budget. We know at some points all waste is going to be a major cost driver, so when you have one of those areas where some single item goes up, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000, it starts to crowd out a lot of other, other other items.
All right. Anything for, yes, Mr. Donnie?
Thank you. Then the question then becomes, what, what are the programs that we're losing? That's the question, right? Because this, this budget seems to be okay. You know, as it was for the past, what, 50 years or so? We've, we've been able to adjust the budget. But then the question then becomes, what programs are we not being able to fund? And as far as the roads go, I think that we do a great job with the roads. And as far as the snow and ice goes, I think that we do a great job with that, too. And if necessary, we have to get more, and sometimes we get federal money as well. So that's, that's the whole.
So the only thing I wanted to say about. So the only thing I wanted to say about, I think one of the things that happens with budgets over time is, each year, you lose a little bit of what you wanted to do. And when you look year to year, there's kind of not much of a difference. But you wake up, and you go back 10 years, what have you lost? And, you know, that's particularly true of the schools, that have lost a lot of programs over the years. And, you know, I think general government in general has different constraints. So, you know, we're starting to feel the ones that they've felt for the last four or five years. So, you know, we're going to be pretty much in the same boat as them pretty soon, I think. But it's just, it's this gradual thing. So if you just look from one year to the next, and you say, oh, that's not bad, but over time, I think, you know, you just have to decide what type of a community you want to be.
So in that response, could we still help out the schools and make the amount of money that we would have, you know, in this operational override, to help out the schools? Put it in to help out the schools and not have to put it in about the general government side? Because general government seems fine, but the schools need the help.
Well, you're going to cut $2 million out of this budget?
Right.
You're going to cut out the police department? What are you going to cut out?
No, we're not going to cut out the police department. We still have the police department, but we, maybe we could have two crews instead of four cruisers. Or maybe we could have two miles of roads instead of five miles of roads.
Although, you actually hit the nail on the head.
That's exactly, I think you really did hit the point, is that it is about choices,
and you can do it, just like, you know, you could decide in your home never to remodel it, because it's a comfortable thing for you, and that's a good choice for many people. But then you also go to resell, and there's a consequence to that.
I think we definitely need to help the schools, because the children are our future. And I think we have to really give it some thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Donahue. All set, everybody? Thank you. Mr. McQuade, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move along then. Next on the list is Mr. Farley, our recreation superintendent.
Recreation, but you can't follow the cycle, we used to.
And now we'll go with the annual, what number is that?
630.
What is it?
Page 47.
47, thank you, recreation.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Could we invite Mrs. Connie to sit at the table in case she wants to be, she has the bookworks that she usually keeps? Would that be okay?
Do you want to sit at the table, Mrs. Connie? You don't have to.
That would make it so much easier for her.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, she's fine where she is. Okay, very good. Very good. All right, all set, Mr. Farley?
All set, ready to go.
Very good. Take us through your page, in the book pages 47, and 48, and 49.
You've got it. So the first line you see is salary for our group, our department. It's, you don't see much of an increase. Obviously, we go about, up about 50 grand. Unfortunately, that's because of the prevailing wage. Like, during the summer, we employ probably around 130, 140 seasonal staff, between lifeguards, pool maintenance.
Prevailing wage or minimum wage?
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage, thank you.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Gone up, so it continues to rise, it's going to continue to rise over the next few years as well. So that, that big jump you see is primarily because-
So we're using the same number of people, more or less?
Same number of people, it just goes up, minimum wage goes up.
In that line, I'd on the salary seasonal, up about 41 and a half percent over the, over three cycles.
Yep.
But it's basically the same staff levels.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So we're not adding anything, it's just minimum wage has gone up over the last few years.
Okay.
So that's pretty much our salary line in a nutshell.
Overall, up 6%. Yep?
Yep.
Okay.
That's, like I said, pretty much prevailing wage, and we've got a few union staff that's gone up for overtime, and wages gone up for that, just, so that's-
But you like to have the seasonal help. I mean, we, you know, it's, again, talking-
Camp counselors and lifeguards.
Yeah.
So it's essential.
We're talking about, Mr. Quaid said, services that we offer that we'd rather not forfeit.
Exactly.
Okay.
It's essential to us operating during the, during the busy summer season.
Very good.
So, and the next, the next grouping you see is operating expenses. You do see a little bit, I'll just, I'll just highlight some of the budget lines that have increased a little bit over the time. Playground utilities, that is, you see a $10,000 bump between FY '19 and FY '20. That's to account for the water rates increasing. So obviously, the water, all the water you see for irrigation of fields, filling the pools, all goes through our department. We manage that budget. So that $10,000 is to assure that we're going to have enough to budget for irrigation of the fields and pool water, and all that good stuff.
Let's see, maintenance of buildings is down quite a bit in three cycles, from 225 to 98. So you can see, a couple of these items are sort of up and down.
Yeah, so they're going to, they're going to go up and down with, with building needs. This year, FY '20 in particular, we have some gym bleachers. They're original to the building from '84. They're, they're rather old, they're not really ADA compliant, so we-
So we're taking care of them in our operating budget?
Exactly.
Good.
So that, you'll see a little bit of increase, that's going to go up and down with, with year to year as well.
Okay.
So the next, in that, we have some playground maintenance items that we have to cover, material, those are for baseball, softball, equipment that you might have. We got some playground maintenance, which is 525,400, has gone up over the last few years from $8,000 to $20,000, but that's for maintenance of fields, that's not covered from the DPW, like fences, soil, and fields that we have to take care of, all the wood chips that we have for the nine playgrounds. So it's, it's something that we need as well.
Okay.
So it's pretty level-funded, and that's kind of our operating expenses as well.
We're up 1.7% overall, barely the rate of inflation. All right, very good. Mr. Bishop?
You talk about utility, though, water in particular. In years past, we've had problems with cracks in the pools and losing water. Are we all watertight?
We are still losing water, but every year, we try to address this best we can. Such as such a short season, we'll continue to try to best, to take care of the problem as best we can at both pools.
Are we talking about one pool now, or are we talking about both pools?
One pool in particular, yes, Oz Pool is. We're seeing some leaking, it's an older pool. We are going to take some, we've asked a couple engineers to come in to do some site analysis as well. So we're, we're trying to take the right steps to inform Mr. Mizuko and Mr. Cooper to figure out how we're going to do, what's going to be the best option to take care of the pool down the line.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It is part of the capital plan for the future.
Yes, so we did put that in there as well.
Yep, okay. Any other questions, comments?
What would you do without if I needed to cut 100,000?
To be honest, and this would probably hurt the town, I'd probably take back PlayCamp and offer that out of our revolving fund. Right now, it's for staffing, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but the, all the counselors, the staffing, the, some of the supply line for that program in particular is PlayCamp. I would, I would be sad to see it go, because it is something that we can continue to offer at a very reduced rate, because we do, we do a lot of people that use that program. And the offering it through the operating ensures that we can offer it at a very reduced cost to the residents, which is something we like to do, because we're not really too stringent with the, with the program with revolving fund. We'd be concerned with what we're making and what we're taking in, whereas as an operating, we can continue to offer it at a reduced rate. We do make a substantial amount of money for the town out of that program, so if we did take that back out of the operating, we would be putting that money back in the revolving fund. So it is a profitable program for the town, that we could, you wouldn't see much of a difference if we took it back.
But it's going into revenue now?
Yes.
So you're going to keep it in revolving, so we would see the loss of revenue?
You would see the loss of revenue, I apologize, yeah. So if you had to take an operating, some operating money away from us right now, it'd probably be the PlayCamp, some of our seasonal money out.
And how much is that, currently?
I'd have to take a look. It will probably be, it would be probably only a third of that, and I'd have to go through off the top of my head. But we could look through a pool, reducing pool hours, some of our seasonal stuff. I could probably take some playground utility money away if we needed to as well.
So you'd be hitting your programs pretty heavily.
The PlayCamp, yeah. You would probably see an increase of cost to make sure we can cover it, and, yeah, you'd see, you'd see, you'd see a little bit of hit with programming, with the PlayCamp in particular.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Anything further? All right, there you go. All right. Anything else from you, Mr. Farley, Mr. Mizuko, anything else? All set?
All set. Just, one thing you'll notice, I think it's in the capital plan, the Civic is an aging facility, so it's going to start requiring more and more attention just to keep the building in good shape. Some of it's the not-so-sexy items, we're doing the elevator this year, we've got to look at the front facade. So just keep in the back of your mind that as a facility, it's aging quite a bit.
Some of it's masonry, too. Some of it's a little dangerous, and we talked about that one time, Travis, right?
Yeah, some of the facade, the stone works in good shape, but the actual limestone, the joint compound between the stone unfortunately is starting to come unglued. We actually have some, some shinks that have come off the building, so that's something that, like Mr. Mizuko said, is probably going to be addressed down the line as well.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. We have been repairing Civic all along. We've done extensive work on Civic.
We have. It's, it's an old building, though, and it continues to age. I mean, that's the problem with an old building that was originally an armory. I mean, the town has owned it since the 80s, and it was, I don't know how many decades the state ran it before that, so it's just, it's an old building. I mean, there's, sometimes old buildings don't, don't last well.
We did a fairly extensive, Kathy might have better information, but we did a fairly extensive facade improvement a few years ago, and it's already falling apart, and we're-
Yeah.
Maybe that's an exaggerated word, but we're having difficulties, and we've had to do patchwork, and now you're talking about stopping the patchwork and doing the permanent repair.
I think a number of years ago, I think when me and Mrs. Connie looked at this a little while ago, I think a bulk of the repair money that we put into it was through the roof. I think the membrane for the roof in the front, and then the back of the gym was a substantial amount of that money. And I'm not quite sure the facade work was, all that, but I'd have to double-check that.
How much was the work, was this Connie years ago?
The town hall?
No, for the Civic.
Civic, I think that we got, it was only like $35,000 or $40,000, but it was to do just a spot repair in the front of the building, by where the main entrance is, because we were having problems with some of the limestone falling out. But it wasn't something in-depth, it was a small amount to take care of that one issue. And since then, we've had several engineers come out and take a look at it to say, what do we need to do? And similar to this building, when you have granite, and you have limestone, you have the brick behind it, and you have water and snow in the wind, that's when you start to see problems with granite building.
What year did we do the roof?
15, 20 years ago, probably around then.
Well, it was within the past 18 years. And we had a slate roof, and somehow or another, the slate roof is gone, and we have this other roof. But the roof is in excellent condition. And at that time, I said, where did the slate roof go? And it was said that it went, because the new roof was less expensive than trying to repair the slate roof, and that the, that, I know we did a ton of work to the Civic at that time. And then we did the showers, right?
We just did the showers, yep.
That was 225,000?
No, that was probably around 79 or, high 70s.
And so in this budget book, what's the 225?
For the capital?
Is it the elevator?
I'd have to look that, I think that's the elevator.
So we just did the elevator? For 225,000?
Mr. Plasko, can we pull up the capital plan? It'll be at the back of this book.
That we did in the gym.
The 225?
Right. When we did the replacement of the, we had replacement windows.
And we did the locker room? We did the room where they have the fight, the wrestling, right? The puce-terry room? Didn't we do work in the puce-terry room there?
You mean the weight room?
Right.
Not that I'm aware of.
We bought some equipment.
Yeah, we took-
Well, we're always still working on that.
We did some minor fan, minor fan work.
The elevator's scheduled or proposed for fiscal '20, so we haven't done the elevator yet. So the elevator is scheduled, repairs to the exterior of the building, the women's locker room, the kitchen, and then we need to look at the roof, because it's starting to have some issues, and then the generator. I mean, again, when, it's one thing to say, well, we repaired the roof, and it's in great shape, but when the roof is leaking, the roof is leaking, and we have to look at these things. We have a tendency to patch our buildings and not take a step back and say, where are we going with these buildings? And we have to accept the fact that in old facility, we have to decide, do we want to properly maintain and invest in that facility, or do we want to keep just, throw money at it and hope everything gets better over time?
My point is that it's not that we haven't done things to the Civic Center, that we have been steadily making repairs. It's not that we've neglected the building.
Right, and we'll have to continue to steadily make repairs.
We used to have wooden doors, now we have glass doors. Before, we didn't have an elevator, now we have an elevator. We've repaired the room, the Leiden Room.
Yep.
We've repaired the kitchen on the second floor there. That whole room was all fixed up where the kitchen area is. So it's not like we've neglected the building. That's my point.
All right, very good. All set? All right, Mr. Farley, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's Mary Lou.
All right, Mary Lou Follin.
Be hard on her, I guess.
Yeah.
I could have done your work.
I could, too. Mrs. Donahue?
Page number is what?
Page 10.
Thank you.
The budget book?
10 and 11.
10 and 11. There you go, 10 and 11. All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, really, the only change in the town clerk's budget is the salaries, because we have now grouped the election and registration, full-time person that was, the full-time salary for the election and registration, we put it all into the town clerk salaries. So all the salaries increased. The only salaries now that we have in election registration is the voter registrars and the poll workers are going to be in the election and registration salary.
All right.
And other than that, mostly everything in the town clerk's budget in, in the election and registration is pretty level-funded.
All right, very good.
We did get hit this year with a few, you know, things that we didn't expect, like early voting came up in the state level. So that was a-
Is early voting expensive? It must be, right?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah. Because we're employing people, you know, longer than, you know, what's expected.
There's a case where the state mandates, we do something, we have to undertake the expense.
Correct.
We have to find room in our budget to accommodate the state.
We do get reimbursed, but it's not a lot. You know, we send them in everything that we do spend and stuff like that, and then we do get some reimbursement.
Okay.
And I anticipate in '21, we're going to have early voting again. But it'll be in '20, though. But it'll be fiscal '21, probably for the presidential year. I'm sure there'll be early voting for that coming up.
Is it popular among our people?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
A lot of people vote.
But really, early voting and absentee voting are kind of like the same in itself. You know, you can't come in and early vote, you can absentee vote. You know, you can't come in and early vote, you can absentee vote, so they're kind of like the same in itself.
All right, very good.
And I do just anticipate that maybe we will have a shortfall in June. I'm not sure, though.
Because of the June third event?
The June election, right.
Okay.
But I'll know more after the April election.
All right, yeah. All right, let us know.
The state's really not supposed to pass unfunded mandates, but every time they pass one and it gets challenged, the courts come back and say, no, it's not an unfunded mandate, it's just a law. So that system has not worked out in state government the way it was supposed to to prevent them from passing unfunded mandates.
Well, it sounds like you get some funding reimbursement, but it isn't enough to cover the whole thing, and, okay. All right, Mrs. Donahue.
Thanks. Mrs. Follin, thank you for the big change over the, it was town clerk and accountant. The change, the split went without a wink of an eye.
Right.
We, one day, we were town clerk and accountant space, next day, we were accounting space and clerk space. Everything went, I just happened to come in that morning, everything was like clockwork.
It did, yeah.
And that, that's because of all the good people that work over there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, it's been, um, it's been fun.
It's worked.
Yeah, it has worked. Yeah, I like it.
All right. Anything further?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you very much. All right, let's see. Next up is, uh, James Collins, superintendent of the light department.
Good evening.
Good to meet you, sir. What page, Kathy?
Page twenty-four, says traffic control and fire alarms if you want to do the effort.
Okay. All right. Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Hanson, thank you very much. We appreciate your coming in with Mr. Collins. So we'll start on page twenty-four with traffic control and fire alarms as we always do, and we see a slight increase there. And, uh, and then we'll, would you explain that a little, and then we'll move on to wherever else we go.
Traffic controls is pretty levelly funded. Um, we've been working on rewiring some of the intersections as we go the wire. You know, the original downtown signals were put in in nineteen eighty-four, and a lot of the wire is cracking. We've been having wiring issues. So every year, we try to rewire an intersection or two, and we're going to keep on doing that.
Okay.
Other than that, most of it is maintenance.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then. What page, Kathy? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Donahue.
Do the, Jim, do the fire boxes still work?
Are the fire boxes still work? We, we maintain the fire boxes on the street. Um, and the people that own the buildings obviously maintain the ones that are on the building, but we still have the fire circuits in service here.
So even all, all the portable telephones are gone, and the telephone booths are gone, we still have our fire boxes?
Fire boxes.
Yay, thank you.
Very good. What page, Kathy?
Uh, next page is ninety-six.
Page ninety-six. Thank you. All right. Four sixty, electric distribution, light department. Very good.
One of the first part of it is the salaries. You'll see that there's a little accounting change where the we, we always took charges on our books for services that the town hall performed for the light department in doing the light bill. Such as the treasurer's office, the accountant's office, general manager's office, a little bit of the selectman's office. Um, that, that always happened with the Department of Public Utilities filing. You know, we always had that in there. This, this year, the manager, uh, you know, pulled it out and he's made it more transparent, I guess.
Okay.
So that's the biggest change.
That's the three hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, the top item there. Yep, okay.
Um, the rest of the budget, um, the only, you know, we, on the, uh, salary and wages, we actually dropped one position, moderated, but we, uh, going through the personnel board, and we're planning on adding a junior engineer. Uh, we've been having, um, really been hard to keep up with some of the, uh, the work levels that we have with respect to the reporting. Uh, beginning in February, we, uh, follow the town, put now falls under OSHA rules. So the reporting requirements are significantly different than they've been in the past. So for that, for that, and that, you know, many, many other reasons, we, uh, we've been going through that process. But the total number of counter people stay the same.
Okay.
Compliance with some of the FERC, which is the Federal Electric Regulatory Commission, compliance with their reporting and their other requirements is just crushing us.
Okay.
Um, moving on to expenses, if that's okay?
Sure.
Questions please?
Go ahead, Mr. Donahue.
Um, Mr. Collins, on the top line there, the three hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, what was the reason for that change?
Um, that, that's a charge that we've always taken. It, it, it just is an indirect cost of the light department. Uh, in other words, it's the cost of the town hall salaries to do work of processing our bills, paying our accounts, um, that type of thing. Uh, we just put it in the budget to show it. Going more towards, uh, like an enterprise fund accounting system. I mean, our auditor thought it was wonderful because he does it every year anyway, uh, town, uh, our accountant, rather than not the auditor.
Okay, so just to clarify, there are certain expenses that we've always booked on the general government side. For example, that portion of the general manager's salary, treasurer's office accounting, and a little bit here in the selectman's office that have always shown up in our budgets, but actually are related to the services that general government provides the, the electric light department. What is the formula, or is there a set formula by which that number is derived, department by department?
It's a long-established formula. How you choose to cost your enterprise fund accounting is really your own decision, as long as you can justify it. Um, you can never say that one hundred percent of the general manager's office is going to be paid for by the light department, because one hundred percent of the general manager's office time is not spent on light department, um, items. Something like the treasurer's office, it's a little easier to figure out. You look at, well, what percentage of their time or revenue are they collecting is light department revenue? Um, some towns choosing their, how they do their indirects a little bit differently. So we've used the same formula. The formula itself is not changing. We're just changing how we're recording and reporting it. Um, as Mr. Collins said, our light department accountants have been recommending this for a while. We're happy to see us do it. The Department of Revenue who's actually recommended, we move in this direction for quite some time. We can't split everything out and do it all in one year, so you'll see a couple of changes like this over the course of a couple of years. It won't have any net impact to the profit that the town is able to take, uh, from the light department, but it'll clarify where our expenses are and where our revenues are, and it'll present the budget a little bit clearer, a little bit more transparent, as well as keeping both our accountants, the DPU, and the Department of Revenue happy. Right now, we sort of just throw everything in together, and it gets a little muddy, especially when we go to close out the year.
Okay. We kind of do two sets of books now. We do town sets of book, set of books that had, had it done the old way before this year. We're, we're just starting to make the change, but then, as Mr. Collins says, when they do the report for the state, they report it that way, so that's why I reference two. That's when I call two sets of books, you know, they, they have to show it the proper way.
Okay. Okay. So, so this is, this is moving, this is best practices?
It is best practice.
It is common practice. I mean, it's best practice, but it's, we're, we're really the only ones that do it this way.
Okay, all right, and now we're going to do it the way?
Again, it'll take us a couple of years to fully move everything. There's things that you're going to remember or sort of backend entries that you're doing, but it'll function like a true enterprise fund, where it will be, here's the town's general fund, here's the light fund, broadband, water, and sewer. It doesn't, doesn't hurt us from the revenue perspective, it just clarifies what's a light expense. And a lot of it does have to do with our state reporting and our filing of our schedule lay at the end of the year with the state, where it just gets muddied up in a lot of our other receipts and expenses. It also has to do with how we're maintaining the light department's finances, because remember, we have to treat the light department sort of as a separately owned business that it is, and how we record their finances and their income and their revenue, and the co-mingling of funds just needs to be a little bit clearer than it currently is. We've kind of muddied it up quite a bit.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. James. Good evening, Collins.
Good evening. Nice to see you.
Total?
Total wages.
Yes.
It seems like it's a substantial increase this year.
Well, it, actually, if you take the total wages and you add that three hundred fifty thousand that we added in there.
That's, that's the deal. I was kind of thinking.
That's the bulk of it. Uh, then these two and a half.
That puts us in line.
Then these two and a half percent.
I, I kind of figured where that was at.
But that, that's the bulk of the money.
That's it, yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Okay, want to continue?
Okay, onto expenses. Um, the purchase power cost is estimated to be a little bit higher. Uh, what, since I submitted this budget, you know, we submitted the budget back, it seems like September, or so, quite a while ago. Uh, we've, we've had, uh, some pretty good growth in kilowatt hour sales, which surprised me. Uh, you know, we didn't really forecast, uh, as much. We're, in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, we had about four percent growth, which is substantially higher than we've had in the past years. I think, uh, some of that has to do with the new, uh, industrial company, the pharmaceutical company up at.
Moderna.
Uh, and then, um, obviously, these other, other people growing in town, too. Um, so the, the number is up. A little bit of it is growth, uh, some of it is cost, uh, the transmission cost has continued to escalating. After this next, after this budget, the following year, uh, the capacity cost will start to come down a little bit, so that will be, uh, help, help us. It won't help us, obviously, for next year, but the following year, I think, uh, we'll start seeing a decline in capacity cost. I'm not sure transmission continuing to, to go up. Energy itself is staying pretty flat, and then it really depends on where the growth goes. In other words, we, we do have, you know, some, some projects that are planned that should use some decent power, like the skating, Boston skating club.
Mm-hmm.
A few hundred. Uh, so that, that number's up a little bit. Other than that, the, uh, there aren't any real substantial changes. There, there are in, in both the office, uh, number, I'm trying to identify that quickly here, uh, which is about the fourth line down. Needs a pretty good jump there. That has to do with postage. It has to do with some of the conversion on the computer. And it also has to do with, um, training. Again, that's an OSHA-related thing. And if you look down the budget to, trying to be, you know. Contribution line of print, I'm sorry, it's taken so long. About three quarters down the page of expenses.
Yep.
There's a big jump that goes from, uh, one twenty-nine to one ninety-five.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that, that's almost totally related to, uh, safety training, um, and, uh, equipment, uh, fire-related, fire retardant equipment and that type of thing. That, that's the reason for those big jumps, and those are the real major changes.
Okay, very good. I noticed, by the way, we've made. I, I noticed we made one change here in depreciation. We're lumping it all into one big.
We, we've done that historically. The way, uh, we get the depreciation number, it's three percent of the plant value.
Yep.
And then as we spend it, we, we, uh, distribute the, the expenses.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Mr. Collins, could you please explain how the new building, um, affects this budget?
Um, in, in the operating expenses, there's a couple of different lines where you have gas and oil and that type of thing. Where we would have increase, there's a little bit of an increase for, for those operating costs.
But the cost of doing the new building, that's not reflected in here at all?
That's not reflected in the budget at all, no. That, that's really, uh, that was the capital, that's the borrowing, for, for the most part. We, we did spend about a million dollars of depreciation for the engineering cost.
Is that reflected in here?
Um, it's an expense in, in the, uh, that will be in the FY nineteen, uh, budget. It will be expended, it'll be distributed as, as an expense. It'll be one of the items that come out of that depreciation line in nineteen. That, that, that's where that, that shows up.
How's the progress going?
It's going very well. Um, they're, they're on schedule. They're moving along. They've had a very good winter weather wise to do it. Most of the work is, uh, is inside, and it's been, um, taking down walls, um, you know, demolition type of things. And then they're doing a lot of reinforcing on the steel, the steel beams inside to make it, to bring it up to the current earthquake codes and structural codes for, uh, earthquakes and hurricanes and things of that nature. Uh, so there's not a lot to see yet, uh, but.
Are you pleased with how it's going?
I'm very happy. They're, they're moving along very well. It's a very organized, uh, construction group, uh, and things are going along well.
And what will the estimated total cost of that project be?
Uh, estimate, it's about fourteen million dollars. I, I forget the exact dollar.
That's an excellent asset for the town, a new asset of fourteen million dollars.
It is.
And that will be a huge help to the light department?
It will help us an awful lot with the equipment and safety, from a safety point of view.
So that shows that we're trying hard here in Norwood?
Yes, yes, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that a green building? I would hope it is.
It, it's as green as we can make it without putting, we're, we're not putting the solar panels on initially. We do have the roof designed to be able to hold solar panel. Uh, we, you know, they, they require you to, uh, build, building now to a certain energy code, and we're certainly meeting that code.
I love that answer. As green as we can make it.
No, no, like, like, for example, at the high school, I recall the term gray water. You know, that, that they were utilizing gray water up there, which was, uh, probably faucet water.
Yeah, we don't, you know, we don't use a lot of water, um, so, you know, we, we didn't do any fancy systems in the building. We tried to keep it.
No, but like the heating, I'm sure the heating.
The heating's going to be, uh, efficient, but we did want to make it so it was simple to operate. We, we, we were very careful in, in that, um, you know, I've heard some terrible stories about how you have to hire specialists to come in and run your boiler. We, we wanted something that we could operate easily and, and we'd just do what we want to do on a day-to-day basis, so. And, and we wanted to keep the costs as competitive as possible. Um, so I, I don't know if it's the most efficient, but, but it certainly will meet.
But that was in the thinking. That's, that's.
It was in the thinking.
That's, thank you.
The cost to bring a building up to LEED standards, so they have like the LEED silver and LEED gold, it's much easier when you're building new to try to renovate an existing building to those standards. You're, you're spending more than it would be to, to build new.
Right, right. Thank you.
And, uh, so the depreciation number is based on the plant value.
Right.
And the plant value is eighty-six million dollars, so that's three percent of that.
Okay.
That's where that number comes from. Uh, any other questions on the budget?
Any questions?
Onto broadband, if we could.
All right.
Just one comment, if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Kipper.
We discussed what with Mr. Quaid, the purchase of power number, uh, there was always a separate appropriation item.
Yep.
A separate account item. Because it is so large, it really distorts the bottom line in that account. So we're going to try to split that off, because that purchase of power number can take some viral gyrations over the years, um, depending on the markets. So we hope that the final version of this budget under the new accounting system will be separate, like standalone, as it has been in the past.
Okay, we're estimating revenue of about sixty-three million dollars, I think, for the light department. Expenses of roughly forty-nine for a net of fourteen, but then we subtract debt service from that, right?
We're keeping about nine.
Yeah. Cause that, cause that number really, the, the net number really has not increased a whole lot in the last fifteen or twenty years as an actual number. Uh, but I don't know if that's necessarily a bad thing, you know, it might mean that people are using less energy, and, uh, but, and we have been investing more in the plant.
Right, well, we, and we are limited to, uh, keep it to eight percent of, of the plant value, you know, that we try to target that at a, a number.
All right, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Could you please explain that again about the eight percent?
Uh, the, the, we, we operate the, uh, light department, um, and the DPU has regulations that, um, you're allowed to make eight percent of your plant value, and that's how we try to set our rates, um, as close to that. I mean, the numbers go up and down, uh, year after year, but, but that, that's what we try to set the rates around.
So the plant value this year?
Is eighty-six million dollars.
So we're allowed to make eight percent of the eighty-six million?
That's correct.
Thanks.
It'd be roughly seven million.
Rough seven million.
And we're making, we anticipate about five. So as debt service falls, though, that, that delta could increase to our benefit.
Uh, yeah.
Up to the eight percent.
Right, but just remember, that, that, that comes with a rate increase, that eight percent, so it's not that we're just not choosing to take profit. That comes out of nowhere. We would need to raise rates to, uh, to increase that amount.
Okay, very good. Okay. Anything else? No, you want to broaden, right, we're to, uh, page ninety, what is it, Kathy?
One hundred.
One hundred, one hundred and one. One hundred and one, one hundred and two. All set?
All set, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, no, no real significant changes. Uh, year after year, we see the, um, cost of programming going up. And again, this year, that's happened. We're hoping at some point, the, uh, the rate of cord cutters are going to off, help offset that increase from year to year. And, um, pretty, pretty confident it's going to happen over the next, you know, four or five years. Um, going down the list, uh, you know, the, as I said, there's not a lot of significant changes. Um, depreciation is up, um, from this current year. Uh, you may recall from previous years, some years we borrow, some years we don't. Um, last year, we borrowed, so the, the actual operating depreciation was a little lower. This year, we're not borrowing, so that, so we're spending more out of our, our operation budget than we would have in, in the year that we did borrow.
Depreciation is the capital of, of the broadband, because, you know, we come buy our boxes, uh, buy wire, do installation dictation.
It's like a savings account.
Not so much with us. It's, it's a capital expense.
It's a capital expense, yeah.
For us. So, um, yeah, unless you have some questions on any particular lines.
Just the long-term effect of cord cutting, Darrell, that, you know, what, does that mean that, that outfits, or outfits like this go out of business someday?
No, no, because as people are cutting the cord for a cable TV, they're, they're buying more internet.
Okay.
Um, and there's much, it's a much more profitable product as well. Um, telephone, we see also residential customers cutting the cord, um, but the businesses are always taking it, and they're taking more and more of it. So it kind of offsets in a better way.
Yep, okay. Mr. Howard? All right, okay. Anybody, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hanson, please, the advertising expense, five hundred sixty-four thousand dollars?
Sure. Um, two things come out of that. One is the advertising, and, and we obviously have to do a lot of advertising because of the competition that we have out there. You know, we don't spend nearly as much as they do, but we have to spend quite a bit to, you know, keep these customers coming. Every time we lose a customer, we have to replace that customer, so we spend quite a bit in advertising. The other part of that budget is our, um, franchise fees. That's what pays NPA TV. So that's five percent of our cable TV revenue comes out of that outline.
So it would seem that that figure should be split, and that should be franchising fees and advertising fees. But you and I had a talk about this a few weeks ago, when I said that I went to the computer and I looked up Norwood, uh, looked up advertising.
Sure.
And, and you, I said, how come Comcast is there, Verizon's there, and, and you said it's because of the fee?
That they pay to, to be where they are, you know.
Right, so. Right. So, that was an education. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nothing further. I'd make a motion in our capacity of light officials, we approve the light department and broadband budgets as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve made and seconded. Anything further on the motion? Hearing none. We'll put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I've seen you.
Marcy. All right, very good. Next up, Chief William Brooks. Page seventeen, all right.
Good evening.
Hello, Chief. Officer Grasso, how are you? Good to see you.
How are you?
Mr. Basal?
We'll be back. Thank you.
All right, we're on page seventeen of one oh two, seventeen and eighteen. All right. Chief, the floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Take you through some highlights, Mr. Chairman. So, the, obviously, the salaries are contractually driven, for the most part. You'll notice in the fourth line down where it says work clothing, that's a, that's a new item, and the reason for that is that, while police officers buy uniforms and equipment charged to the department under their contract, traffic supervisors and custodians, the money goes to the employee. So, we've been told that that really should be a salary account. So, that's why that money just represents the uniforms for those traffic supervisors and custodians, and that's why you saw it non-existent in previous years.
It's a best practice, just a proven practice.
That's right. It's an accounting practice.
Yeah, okay.
It's actually required practice by the state. As we've gone through the conversion process to the MUNIS software, we found a lot of budget errors that were just items that were miskeyed in a different area that we've been able to correct.
Okay. The other lines, as you go down, for the most part, I think are in line with previous years. They represent, for the most part, cost of living adjustments. When you get down to, here's another move, such as what Mr. Mazuka was just, Mazuka was just describing, where it says salary tuition allowance. So, previously, there was an officer's school account that you may have remembered seeing before, and that was an account that covered all training. The problem there is that that was a mix of some pay that went to employees, typically overtime to attend training, overtime paid to people who are instructors or firearms instructors and that sort of thing. But then there were also some incidentals that were mixed into that same account, of things like ammunition, tuition for the training that we have to pay to attend. And again, as an accounting practice, that should have been split out. I remember coming here from Wellesley and seeing that and thinking it was just a little different, but it seemed to be working, so we didn't, we didn't talk a lot about it. But, so this year, you've seen in the previous year, a much higher number. Now that's been reduced to fifty-two thousand. That represents twenty-five percent of normally what would have been there, and you'll see the other seventy-five percent move to incidentals when we get there. Excuse me. On the incidentals, I think you'll see that, for the most part, everything in the incidentals from the top, really all the way down to that training account, is all level funded, with the exception of two. One is at the, the third one down, five hundred, is vehicle maintenance. We've been struggling with vehicle maintenance, and we've taken a lot of steps to try to bring that down, but vehicle maintenance for a fleet of twenty or so vehicles is expensive. We're buying cars with extended warranties. We're trying to, we're trying to manage that as best we can. Deputy Chief Kelly has been doing a lot of work with Central Motors around that. But in any event, there is an increase that's reflected there. And then the other adjustment you'll see is when you get down to work clothing and uniforms, that's the other half of what I talked about. On the, the other side of that issue, I just explained with the traffic supervisors, and that the, that one eleven represents the fifteen thousand that's been removed, that are now, that's now in a salaries account.
So, put it together, it's roughly even.
Yes, it would have been, yeah. It would have been level funded, that's correct. And then the last thing I would point out to you, and again, it's down line sixty, six hundred, which says training slash school. Again, you see that that's a brand-new account. There's no, there are no funds for the, for the previous years. That number that you see represents seventy-five percent of what would have been our officer's school account. So, we've got seventy-five percent of it on the incidental side, twenty-five percent of it on the salary side. So, that's, that's a new account, and that's the reason for that. Otherwise, I think you'll see that everything here really is level funded from the previous year.
So, the, okay, so the, the training school would have been over here under tuition allowance? Yeah.
Yes, that, that number, that one fifty-seven number, had we not made the change, you would have seen the salary accounts under officer's school. You would have seen that combined with the fifty-two.
So, a slight increase, you should take into account. I get it. Okay, very good. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Chief, thank you very much for putting the vehicle replacement in the operating budget. That really cheered me up.
Well, yes, I didn't do it alone, though. Believe me, as you know. But, yes, I think, I think that's...
Thank you.
We were gradually doing that before Mr. Mazuka came here. If Mr. Mazuka takes the credit, really, you know, we've been moving toward that for a while.
It makes a lot of sense. I know, I know it's a high number, but it's really a recurring expense and a predictable one, so.
Well, that's, and that's why you do it. I mean, to tell you the truth, to borrow for rolling stock over the short term is really not a lot of money. You don't pay a lot in interest, but it's just the fact that it's a recurring thing, you ought to discipline the budget to build it in and just pay for it year after year.
Year after year.
Instead of just borrowing endlessly, so.
And our vehicles, you know, unlike really any other vehicles in society, they're not used to get you from one place to another. They're, it's to always, always be in motion. They're, they're always running. They're not for transportation, they're for, they're for patrol, which is an entirely different function, and high idle times. So, I think, yeah, I think it makes great sense to have it done the way it is here.
Okay. Maybe other departments will follow.
You never know.
Very good. Questions? Mr. Plasko?
So, we've got a basically level-funded budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. What are we going to have to do without if we have to cut a hundred thousand?
Well, that would be tough.
Well, overall, we're up five point one percent, actually.
Yeah, but that's mostly contractual obligations and so forth, so if he hasn't put in anything special other than those vehicles, instead of borrowing them. But then again, as the chairman pointed out, we have been doing it the last couple of years that way. So...
Just to be clear, we added, I think, three vehicles in last year's budget and the fourth one in this year's budget, so they didn't all go in the same one year.
Right. So, we have to cut a hundred thousand. We're going to hurt somewhere.
We're going to hurt a lot. You know, ninety-two percent of our budget is paying people. So, it's paying fewer people, quite frankly. Yeah, that would be a problem. That would be a problem. You know, the department used to be, used to be larger than it is now, and when I returned here, you know, about, it's almost seven years ago now, it was much smaller than when I left it, and I, I asked, where did everybody go? And we've been able to restore a few positions, and I think it's a healthier department, and we're getting a lot done now. I'd hate to see us lose traction on that. I'd hate to see us roll back.
We all would. Thank you.
But on the other hand, Mr. Plasko, if you look to overtime, at some place here, I'm sorry.
Fifth one down?
I'm, I'm not sure. I saw it before. Overtime, in recall, hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars, you know? So, that you...
You're going to fight about it.
Okay, wrong page.
That's page over there.
Right.
Fifth seventeen.
Okay.
Fifth line down.
Okay, there it is. Forty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars. But what I'm saying is, I think the chief is happy with this budget the way that it is.
I know.
Yeah. I don't think you heard it, Chief.
My point, my point is if we had to do without, what would that mean?
Why would we have to if we have the funds in there now?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you, Will.
We'll see you again.
Thank you, Kevin.
Let's see. Chief George Maurice, Fire Department. We're four minutes behind schedule here, Mr. Mazuka. We're doing good.
We're less behind schedule than we usually are.
Well, that's, oh, wait, I was thinking, yeah. Hey, Chief?
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Very good.
All right, Fire Department is on page nineteen and twenty. All right, did I get that right? Nineteen and twenty. We're up overall six point two percent of the Fire Department budget. Chief, why don't you take us through what you've got?
Sure. Only a minimal amount of changes for the FY twenty requested budget. The first one you may notice is an increase in the salary of the department head. Chief Greeley previously had a base salary, but a number of other items with that base salary, things like holiday pay, longevity, education stipend. So, when I came on board, it was agreed between Tom Langer, Mazuka, and myself, just to have one number, one salary, just to make everything more simple. So, that's why that is an increase in that line.
Okay.
The next line is that you will see an increase of the salaries. That has the two point five percent COLA in it. It's a number of different positions within the department, and it also includes, starting halfway through the fiscal year, the second deputy chief's position, the salary for that.
That's in, I'm sorry, salary full-time?
Yes.
Yeah, the second line. Okay, very good.
Chief, could you talk about that a moment, please, about the second deputy?
Sure. I've, find it very important for the Fire Department to move into the future, and one of the ways to do that is to add a full-time second deputy chief. One of the main reasons why I'm doing that is that individual become a training officer for the department. Many times, we have training on our crews, but the crews are constantly in and out because they're going on calls, and we need a person that can be there all the time, so when they do come back, he can be consistent with that training. Another issue along the training line is that we have individuals that have attended many different academies across the state. Mass Fire Academy, Brockton, Brookline, Boston, and they're all being basically taught the same thing, but not completely. And the reason I want that position is to standardize that training across the board. And I view it somewhat as a safety issue with the department, that I want them to be able to all have the same exact training. A few other things that the deputy chief will do, personnel issues, program implementation. So, a program such as the active shooter, we need someone, you know, to take programs like that, develop them, and then implement them. Currently, with the structure we have at the Fire Department, the deputy chief and I do not have the time to, you know, pursue all the different programs that the department needs to provide the best services to the people of the town. So, that will be another responsibility. We need to develop our SOPs and SOGs. Those are standard operating procedures and standard operating guidelines. We need to improve that facet of the department and have all those things written down. And again, a safety issue for the department. God forbid something ever happened. We have to be able to go back and show that we, we have these SOPs and SOGs and the training that goes along with that. And the last thing I'd like to do is for the, the deputy chief is to be involved in grant writing, which is very important for us to hopefully get more equipment and different programs for the department, obviously at a not a cost to us. So, those are some of the main functions that I was looking at for that position.
So, the obvious, two questions I have to follow up on that is, are these, these duties currently being done by other people, currently?
They're not, not completely.
And, and why couldn't the deputy do these things?
Well, the, the current deputy chief does some of these, but he's also doing other items for the department. His job description is more, he reviews plans for fire engineering systems of the commercial buildings within the town. So, as you know, we have buildings being built everywhere in town, so he's very, very busy with that, making sure that all the blueprints and the plans are up to the code for the fire service. He also implements the standards for the Fire Department, which is the NFPA, so he does that. He assigns training, and he, he has developed training programs over the year, but he doesn't actually oversee it. We need that individual, as I said, to oversee the training and be a part of the training where they standardize everything across the board, so everyone is trained to the exact same level. Because he's busy doing other things, he cannot do that.
Here's the last question, Chief, if I could. Could a low-ranking person do these things?
Not really.
Rather than having an executive officer, if you will?
I think one of the issues with that is that you want to have an executive-level officer to do it, because they have the, in the ranking structure, they have the ability to implement that to the regular firefighters. I think it's important to build the organizational and administrative structure of the Fire Department. If you look at other departments within the town, and Chief Brooks is an example, he's at the top, but then he also has five other individuals below him before he gets to the regular patrolman. We do not have that at the Fire Department. All we have is the chief, the deputy chief, and then all other individuals.
We have lieutenants.
Correct, but...
They're not there every day.
They're not.
So, the police command structure, you have the chief, the deputy chief, and then you have four.
No, but you have a lieutenant that's in charge of the men.
He's on ship, but he's also, he's assigned to the engine, so he has his responsibilities, going out on calls constantly. As the captain has his responsibility, where he's overseeing different responsibilities in the crew. This individual would be an administrative position where they are available Monday through Friday, eight to four, nine to five, that type of schedule, where they're always there to oversee that training and actually be a part of it. The other individuals are constantly being called out on runs. We're a very busy department, fifty-six hundred runs.
Oh, yeah.
So, that training gets interrupted all the time.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your courtesy.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Bishop?
Ah, yes. I personally think there is a need for a second deputy. This is a different town now. We have very sophisticated buildings out there with very sophisticated alarm system. The rank structure would be much better, and you mentioned one thing that could save us money in the long term. If we had someone that sat down and did grant writing as his job, that would bring us a lot of money coming into the town that we don't have to put forward to help in training and administration and so on and so on. So, I personally feel that there is a need for a second to make it a better rank structure, make it a better Fire Department overall.
And I, I think if you look at other towns in the Commonwealth, that some that are close to Norwood, they have similar runs, and they have similar numbers of departmental members, and they have more than one deputy chief. So, I think it's time for the Norwood Fire Department to move into the future with that.
Thank you, Chief.
If I could just follow up on that, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
We talked about the rank structure. Yes, you have lieutenants in the Fire Department, and you have some captains, but we also have four lieutenants across the board under the deputy chief, and then under them, we have a group of sergeants, and then we hit the patrolman. So, they have more of a rank structure than you have on your side. I think it's time that you get a strong rank structure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Will you continue? Go ahead.
Okay. Continuing down the line, everything is the cost of living increase. Get to overtime dispatch, that's cost of living increase, plus overtime that was added for accrued vacation. Substitution account, again, is the COLA with accrued vacation for both firefighters and officers. You may notice that the longevity has gone down for FY twenty. The reason why is we have less than ten fighters now, ten firefighters now that have their longevity in separate...
Because of turnover, oh, is it a turnover thing or just a different accounting?
Well, the, the last contract that we had, it was now included into their base salary, so you see that carried into a different line.
Okay. The substitution line is up about twenty-four percent. That's, you say that's COLAs?
In accrued vacation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, do you, by the way, do you have, it occurred to me that, remember that there was, we did a study about six years ago or seven years ago on staffing and substitution? Do we, do you have, do you have that? Have you ever seen that?
I have.
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Have you seen it, Mr. Mazuka?
I think I read through it in the past, but we can, we can dig it up if you'd like a copy of it.
No, I, I know what it says. I just, I want to make sure that the chief has it, too. It might be helpful just in terms of some of these, particularly the substitution budget. Anyway, okay, go ahead. Yep?
And going down the line is, everything is the cost of living increase, and we get to the EMT pay. And again, this is an increase of almost sixty thousand dollars, and it is a cost of living, and it's contractually obligated increase in the number of employees that are receiving that EMT stipend. obligated increase in the number of employees that are receiving that EMT stipend. So that's, that's the amount there.
By the way, we have one ALS and one BLS ambulance, right? Is it your desire that we go to two ALS ambulances in time?
Most definitely, yes. I think it provides a better level of service to the people of the town.
And what's the difference for people who don't know?
It's a much higher level of skill and what the care level they're actually able to give to the patient. Basic EMTs, which I was one, they can do CPR, different types of breathing for people, bandaging, stopping bleeding, things of that nature. But paramedics can start IVs, they can put you on a cardiac monitor, they can intubate you when they're breathing for you. Much higher level of care.
So when a call comes in, do you have to know which ambulance to send?
The dispatches.
Dispatch has to know, right?
Yep. And they have a complete protocol as to what they send ALS for and what they send BLS for.
Okay, very good.
Both trucks are equally busy, but if the ALS ambulance is out, the only one that is in the building is the BLS. So you may have a patient that really requires advanced life support treatment, but they're getting the basic life support.
Okay. Is that part of our capital plan for the next few years, Mr. Mizuko?
The physical machines actually won't change, it's just the skill set of the staff and what they're able to provide.
Oh, okay.
Some of the inside equipment will change, but it's not that we need to buy a new ambulance, per se. You equip it differently. It's the skill set of the employees. You have to be certified to work at that level. We have to get certification from the state, from our medical director. We have to have the staff in place. There's some contractual changes, so it's a, it's a complex process, but it's about offering a better life-saving capacity to the community.
And when necessary, do we enjoy mutual aid and give mutual aid in that category? ALS and BLS ambulances?
We do.
Okay.
We also can, sorry, we can bill a little bit more for the ALS, not that that's the, not that that's the motivation for doing it, but we actually are able to bill more for that than the basic.
It will bring in quite a bit more revenue, but for me personally, it's providing a better service to the people of the town.
Exactly.
And I'll give you a quick example, that we happen to have the ALS ambulance available Saturday morning, but we had a woman in childbirth on Monroe Street, and the ambulance went and delivered a beautiful baby boy. And much preferable to have the paramedics there, where they can start IVs, put the woman on the cardiac monitor, that type of thing. So it's just a much better level of care.
When do we send two ambulances, Chief?
We don't unless, for some reason, the basic ambulance is sent, and they realize that the patient needs a higher level of care than what they can provide, so they'll call back for the ALS ambulance, or they may call mutual aid for their ALS ambulance.
Or if you have someone real heavy, which happens all the time now.
Yes. We do send an additional vehicle with members on the squad truck that also help with that, if you have someone that...
And they need it.
Yes.
Seriously. That's an issue.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but the medical response vehicle that we're looking for in the capital plan would allow us in that situation, instead of sending an ambulance that would then get tied up, we can send a medical response vehicle, where one or two firefighters can go on that, and you're not tying up the actual ambulance as a vehicle.
Okay.
And then going through the rest of the budget, everything is level funded until we get to the training budget. And that increased by 2.5%, but there was also an addition of $32,000. $22,000 of that is for training. And the reason why that was put in, as I had mentioned before, that when we do do training, the trucks are constantly being called in and out of the building while they're doing the training. So with this money, we were hoping to take it and have training with each crew at least once a year, where we're able to replace the crew and do training strictly with the crew uninterrupted. So certain topics are very important to do that with, whether it is rapid intervention training, RIT training, or active shooter. I know Chief Brooks just had his people up at the high school where they did active shooter training, but it was uninterrupted. They didn't have calls that they had to leave for, go out on.
This is to replace the staff you're training?
Correct.
So shouldn't that actually be over in the substitution account?
Well, it depends on how you would do it, whether you are saying that Group One is scheduled today and we're replacing them, or you just say Group One is not scheduled today, but we're bringing Group One in to do their training. That's how I'd rather do it. Their schedule's not going to change, there would be an extra day for that group, that you'd have a whole group to do, a whole group training all at once. I'd rather keep that separate from the...
So they'd be basically coming on a day they're not scheduled for.
That's probably the easier way to do it, scheduling-wise. And the idea is just if it's not clear for anyone at home, we, the 15 men and women we have on a given shift don't actually all completely train together at the same time. When we try to do it, one of the things you have is calls come in, so there's disruption. So the 15 people that would respond to an incident don't actually all learn together at the same time. You're taking a few of the guys and girls here, a few of the folks here, a few of the folks here. It's not a great training model. I'd love to do it 10 times a year, we'd be able to do it once per group per year with this training amount, but all of them will be able to train uninterrupted. We also face a liability issue when we try to do training and people are constantly being, it's not just an interruption where they're getting a phone call from their friend, it's okay, here's the training schedule for today, and they're leaving for half an hour for a call, or they're leaving for an hour for a call, and then they're coming back. It's a problem. We don't train any other departments like this, and when it's important, fire training, and this is mostly on the fire training side, where we've been lacking for quite a while. There's a lot more EMS required and mandatory training that we keep up on, but the actual fire training, we've sort of been falling behind on, and we want them ready in the case we have to use them.
I think when I first got on the department 30 years ago, when we were doing 3,000 runs a year, it wasn't as much of a problem, but with the number of runs that we do now, it's just trucks are constantly in and out, and it interrupts that training.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, what is the standard for number of hours of training for veteran employees? We have, all of our people are very well-trained before they join the department. So what is the good amount of hours of training that they should get every year to learn new things?
I don't know the exact number, Mrs. Donahue, I can get that for you.
No, but is, are we meeting that requirement?
We are.
Thank you.
But some of it's classroom, it's not hands-on training.
Right.
And I think that we need to, there are other aspects of training we need to get into.
When a firefighter reports for a shift, how many hours is he in the station?
Usually 24.
So it would seem that there would be time during the day.
There is, but that's what I'm mentioning, is that trucks are constantly being called in and out.
Because they have to respond to a call.
It's just we're too busy of a department to operate that way. It's, there's not as if we have a six-hour lull every morning, you know, that we know we can do the training then. The ambulance calls come in constantly, all the time. The trucks are constantly being called out.
So if there are 15 firefighters on a shift? How many are meeting the ambulances?
Two and two.
So there are 11 other firefighters in the station available for training?
Correct.
Thank you.
Also, continue.
And the other 10,000 that was added to that line was for officer meetings. I spoke with Town Manager Mizuko, and we felt as though that having regular meetings four times a year with my offices would greatly benefit the department. That way, we could make sure that any information between the offices, any issues that are coming up at the department, we're in touch with each other, and then we're able to disseminate that information down to...
You'll meet off-site, is it?
No, no. So it's meetings and training, it's just that remember that all the officers are scheduled to certain shifts. So you do need to bring them in at overtime when you want to have a officer training and an officer room.
So we just, we had my first officer meeting a month and a half ago in the community room at the police station, and while we were doing that and discussing different issues facing the department, different ideas as to how we can improve the department, I also had Bill Sullivan from Cooking Company, who is our Injury on Duty company, to come in and talk to the offices and give training on how we can better manage IOD paperwork and injuries on duty. So when I do do this, I plan on combining it...
Go ahead, Chief.
I plan on combining it with training. I plan on, the next time we meet, that we have Jim Mannion come in from MEMA, and he's going to speak to the offices about what MEMA can do for the fire department in different types of emergencies.
And just to give you a comparison, Chief Brooks meets with his four lieutenants daily. The fire department, there's a captains' lieutenants' meeting annually, so we're looking to go to maybe quarterly plus a few times as a starting point.
Okay.
I remember hearing about this from Chief Really and Chief Howard, two past chiefs, that this was an issue, that you don't have that regular connection with your lieutenants because they're on those rotating shifts.
Correct.
And then not really able to be adequately part of the command staff because you don't see them on a regular basis.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
A question, please. What line is that?
That is the line...
Training school line.
Training.
Yep, school.
The training school line, is that the 215?
Yes. 215, 475.
What's going on there, what's they have done on there?
Okay, so that's, what is the amount on that, Chief?
The total's 215, $215,000 for the line.
So when a person becomes an officer, in the past, was their attendance at these meetings part of the job description?
They never had those meetings until, I believe, I don't know if Chief Howard ever did it, but...
I might be wrong, but I think he did it, and it brought him in unpaid overtime. And there isn't overtime account in the budget.
And then Chief really kept it going, and it was only once a year.
But in other departments, is that, is that attendance at that training included in the job description?
These are hourly employees, where you're bringing them in on a different shift than their schedule.
I understand.
So, you know, I may be able to bring in my DPW form and meet with them every day because they're meeting during their normal, regularly scheduled shift. These unfortunately, because of the nature of the department, they're not meeting during their regular shift.
I understand that, but they are getting paid additional funds.
Correct.
Their salary, their offices, right?
Yes.
Right, they're not salaries, though.
And I was curious to see if that would be included in the additional pay that they get, rather than what a regular firefighter gets.
You have to remember, they're hourly employees. The fire officers are hourly employees, so you have...
Your officers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, just to compare that to the police lieutenants are as well, but they're regularly scheduled during the morning. So if Chief Brooks wanted to bring them in on a Sunday when they weren't regularly scheduled, you'd be paying that overtime hourly rate?
But I believe they're not on the rotating schedule.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, they're working a day shift, so if you met with them every day at nine o'clock, they're all there otherwise. If you wanted to bring them in at a time when they were not scheduled, like any hourly employee in Massachusetts, you've got to pay them overtime.
All right, Chief, anything more?
No, I believe that is it.
All right. Very good. Any questions, comments, concerns for the Chief? Mr. Plasko?
I'll ask the question I've been asking all these larger departments. It had to do without $100,000, what are you going to do without? What's your priority?
To without? I know that my priority is getting the second deputy chief.
So I'd have to come somewhere else?
Yes.
And you don't have much anywhere else, except for, most everything else is either contractual or level funded, other than perhaps the training we just had all that discussion about?
Yes, yes. I think that we're pretty lean in this budget, for the most part, it is the same as last year, so...
So no good choices?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you. Chief, thank you so much for the excellent service that your department provides. You really, your group, really are sensitive, intelligent, kind people, and I appreciate their help very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. We all set, then?
I'm all set.
Very good. Chief, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Ryan, Director of Public Works and Town Engineer. And while we're waiting for Mr. Ryan to come in, I think Sarah Winthrop is with him. I want to thank Kathy Carney and Bernie Cooper for joining us this evening to help us out on the side, ready, ready to answer questions and point out what page we have to go to and things like that. So it's been a great, a great help to us, so, all right. Where are we? What page?
25.
25, thank you. All right, very good, Mr. Ryan. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first of all, nice to see you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. All right, nice to see you, and welcome back, Tony from...
Thank you.
...
Of the side of the world.
So, so in front of you, you have the Public Works budget, and first off, we'll start off with Public Works itself, 401. We have the salaries. There is an increase of $109,000, but that's spread out through 42 positions. The next, below that is Public Works, operating expenses, and there's a deduct there of $3,200 from the last fiscal year. Moving on to Engineering, 410. No capital items, right? Capital items, if you want to do them individually? There's none in the budget. None in the operating budget. They're capital outlay. Exactly. Yes, Mr. Plasko, thank you.
One question on the, by the way, on the expense, equipment replacement, repair, under operating expenses, we've level funded that $125,000. Are we, are we seeing the beginnings of the benefit of the new DPW garage, where our, so much, all of our equipment is indoors now, and we're spending less money to repair?
Yes, we have, Mr. Chairman. One of the items you'll see on there is a truck in the capital expenditure. It's 17 years old. I mean, you know, the benefit of having this facility for the last three years has extended that vehicle's life. When we, before the facility we have, we were talking 12-year life expectancy, we're looking at 14 or 15 here, and this particular one is 17 years.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
410 is Engineering. Salaries, there is an increase, and that's step increases there. And as far as operating expense, it's level funded, so the increase for Engineering is based on the increase for salaries.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Highway maintenance, operating expenses, there's a deduct of $12,000 for that, for that part of the budget. And as far as capital expenses, a $265,000 deduct, so highway maintenance total decrease is $277,000. And the biggest reason for the deduct in the capital expense, last year, we funded the roadway projects, $350,000, but because of budget constraints, we added just $100,000, which is welcome in addition to the Chapter 90 funds we get.
We have, we don't have any indication of Chapter 90 yet, right?
No, we've gotten the letter, it's going to be the same $200 million that...
Oh, right.
Well, I suppose the legislature could up that, but historically, they've never...
Statewide, it's 200 million, so we probably should count on whatever we got last year. Because it's been 200 million for every year.
About $870,000.
Yes, correct.
That's right.
So which line does that get added to for roads?
What gets added to the $100,000 line is where it would get added, it doesn't show in the budget. It's actually, it's reimbursable, it's not a check we get for that amount of money.
I know that, but what line here in this budget book does it go in?
It doesn't.
I know, but if we wanted to get a true idea of how much we spend for roads, then...
It would be Chapter 90 plus $100,000.
Added for the hundreds of spending.
Okay, so in this, in, in the 2019 budget, we had $350,000 in there.
Yep.
And in the, we actually spent in 2018, $186,646. So what, why are we putting $100,000 in? Why don't we put in $200,000?
Because we're trying to balance the budget, we don't have it.
Again, I would love to make that number $2 million, and I think the public would love to spend a lot more money on roads. I know we certainly...
Braintree does.
Braintree spends, I think, two or three times their Chapter 90.
1.7 million, yeah.
We just don't have it. If we want to add that in there, it's, something else has to be cut to put that in there. Believe me, more road money is a good thing.
Okay, so, the eight, how much was in chapter 90 again, please?
It's about 870,000 dollars.
Which is actually down.
Does anybody know how much we got in 2018?
That number's been pretty flat for how long, Mr. Ryan, would you say?
2018 was 907,000 dollars.
906, 80.
Yeah, the last three years, it's been very level, so...
906.
But I mean, historically going back, has it ever really exceeded a million dollars?
No, absolutely not.
So, the number historically hasn't changed, because it's based on your population, it's based on your wealth factor, and it's based on your road mileage. Your road mileage really doesn't change if you're not fundamentally growing, we're not adding miles and miles of road. The other numbers change every census period usually, so I would suspect we've been around that 900,000 dollar number since probably 2010 or so. And prior to that, it probably didn't change too, too much at all either. So, the challenge is that that sounds like a lot of money, that's not enough to completely reconstruct even a single mile of road, and costs have certainly gone up in the last 10 years.
But in 2018, we actually spent 1,94,000 dollars in fixing the roads.
Correct.
Because if you add those 250, it's up then, right?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
So, that was a good amount, over a million dollars fixing up roads in one year, that was a good amount.
Excellent.
Yeah, and then, we even had extra money, so we could build all those little extra islands that we really were extra.
No, chapter 90 does not go towards that.
By that time, 186,000 did.
I don't think that was spent on little islands and...
Well, well, what did we spend on then? Where did the money come from?
If that's in the road construction line...
Additional roads.
Yeah, and sometimes, when something gets approved at town meeting or borrowing, the number gets dumped in there. We spent more in fiscal 18 than we did in fiscal 17. Fiscal 19 will be a bigger number than fiscal 18, fiscal 20 is a drop. So, we're spending less money than we did last year and the year before, maybe more than we did a couple of years ago, but as the costs have gone up, we're just not keeping up with the, with the road work.
I noticed the trend is, if you go back to 17, it was just the chapter 90 money. The next year in 18, we decided we wanted to start trying to put in additional funds because we needed to keep up with, or try to keep up better than we are with the road work, and this chapter 90 money isn't enough. Last year, we did significantly better with 300, or the coming year, with 350,000 dollars, but we can't keep that up, we have to cut it back.
We're going backwards.
Because we don't have the budget.
Correct.
That's part of the budget crisis we're talking.
Yes, it is.
So, do we apply for grants anymore like we did before?
So, we've applied to be a complete streets community, will help us in some projects out there, Mass Works is a, is a program that we're looking actively, but those are bigger projects, those are intersection projects, those don't help with paving the streets. Chapter 90 and local appropriation is the main source.
The state is supposed to fix Prospect Street and Route 1A. Steve Costello got grants, fixed a number of the side streets in South Norwood, provided beautiful granite curbing, and he got a lot of grants that helped us out a lot.
Yeah, the present programs of Mass Works that help you out, the, what you're talking about, Upland Road, Prospect Street, that's a transportation improvement program, TIP it's called, and that's a project in fiscal 21 for 4 million dollars that we're looking for, and then fiscal 22 is Route 1 University Ave for 10 million dollars that's on track, so...
And then we have the intersection of Pleasant Street and Moore Street, which was fixed by money from developers?
Pleasant Street and Moore Street, part of that money was, the design was funded by FM Global, but the state funded the million dollar construction, but you're right, that got, jump-started it.
Then we have the intersection of Route 1 and Everett Street.
Route 1 Everett Street, University Ave is the one in fiscal 22, which will be a 10 million, 10 million dollar project, yes.
But also, already, the intersection, the extra lane on Everett Street, that's already there. On Everett Street, if you go down Route 1 heading toward Boston, take a right, that intersection.
The, on the analog?
Yes.
Analog side.
That was a P Wed project, yes, that's...
That was extra money.
That was extra, there's a 1.5 million dollar P Wed grant that we got, I believe in '06, that we added the right-hand turn line, yes.
So, all in all, around town, we've done much more than the, the 1,94,000 dollars that's in the book.
Oh, we're doing quite a bit.
We're having a lot more improvements than those, than that 1,94,000.
Absolutely.
But those are mostly state roads and intersections, that's why they give it to them.
Right, they're not, they're not paving residential subdivisions.
Nevertheless, it's part of the community, and it's the most traveled part of the community.
But it's not our neighborhood streets and everything that are deteriorating.
No, it doesn't apply to chapter 90 program, but it, you know, to Mrs. Donahue, I mean, we're getting the grants, and we're actively pursuing them.
Millions of dollars of grants.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, go ahead, continue, Mr. Ryan.
Okay, so, an ice removal was the next one, so we've got a 50,000 dollar increase just to try to reach that number of the average over the last few years.
And that's, this has so far been a light year.
Well, you know, we all, we all think it's a light year, and when I was in front of the selectmen, and my February meeting, we're at 20 inches, and we had a, quite a bit of money, and then we got whacked.
It had looked like a light year.
We got hit with three storms, so, to date, you know, we usually average 44 inches of snow, surprisingly, we're at 43 inches of snow right now, so the averages work out. 21 salt operations, seven plow operations, two snow removal operations. Sarah's been working hard because it's, I mean, it's, you know, contractors, overtime, material that we have to buy, at 625,000, we're, we're probably a little bit under 30,000 dollar balance right now for that, for that budget. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're not going to have to spend that for the remainder of the year.
But most, my point was, most years, we do have to go over that budget.
That's right, yes.
That's what I meant by light year, so far, we haven't exceeded that budget.
We have not.
We may yet, but as of tonight's...
30,000 dollars.
30,000, okay.
So, no more snow. It's important, the type of the storm really impacts on what the cost is, and I always tell people, I'd rather, I'm sure the DPW wouldn't necessarily, but from a cost perspective, a foot of snow at once is almost the same cost as three, four inch storms, or four, three inch storms, so the small storms with the couple inches are what kill us, and ice is another one that just, the cost goes through the roof.
That's what did us in a few weeks ago, the weather wasn't, you didn't get the right, the weather report wasn't given correctly.
It tricked everyone, and it was a long duration, a lot of materials, so it was costly, and to the manager's point, you know, Sarah, the last two storms, the big 14 inch, was sort of equivalent to the prior three inch, it was all timing, you know, so...
Just, just going back to some of these numbers, the appropriation for fiscal 20 will be, if we, if we do get to 675,000, greater than only one of the past, one of the past five years with this one, because this one's not done yet. 2015 was 2.3 million, fiscal 16 was 652, that was kind of light, but then, as you see, 17 at 829,000, and 18 is almost a million, so...
And that's what we talk about, you know, we can deficit spend on stone ice if we have to, and take the money out of somewhere. We'd like to get to where we're at least averaging what we'll spend in an average winter, and then if you go over that, you can't, you can't predict when you're going to go over it, but we're just so far from that average. We have made progress, at the rate we're going, hopefully, we'd be there in five to seven years at sort of what we're spending on average.
Also, putting inflation.
That's part of the problem, is if costs remain flat, we could do it in maybe four or five years, but costs never do remain flat.
All right, very good.
The next, 430, waste collection disposal, there is an increase there of 102,000, and that's basically contract driven, two and a half percent increase each year for solid waste and recycling collection.
This will be the third year of the current contract, is that correct?
No, we're starting the second year, we're in the first year right now.
The first year, this will be the second year, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, that's just a normal escalator.
That's, that's a normal escalator.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yep. Our next budget, 440, sewage, and that's a level funded, and that's to maintain the sewer system around town, including three pump stations and other miscellaneous work. Drain maintenance, 441, again, level funded, this is maintain the drains around town, materials and contract work that is required. Next budget, 450, water distribution, that's your water system, and remember, just like the sewer, this is all recovered by rates, and there's a deduct from last year of 6,000 dollars, and this is for everything as far as materials, meters, protective gear, consultants, the AMR system, sample testing, flow record, conforming to the Water Directive or Clean Water Act, so this is 6,000 dollar decrease. 491 is cemetery, salaries, there is an increase, 19,000 dollars, and that's spread out over seven employees. Operating expenses, there is a deduct quite a bit to 123,000, that's basically, because we're, we're done with the chip sealing up there at the cemetery, so that's why there's quite a bit of deduct, so total deduction, or reduction in the cemetery is 119,000 dollars.
Mrs. Donahue.
Mr. Ryan, have we made any money selling those liners?
Absolutely, positively.
How much?
We, we make about 400 dollars per liner, and we sell between 80 and 90 per year.
Nice job.
Yes.
Thank you.
And all the credit to Paul Ranali and his staff, we never did provide that service, and not only the town making money, but we're saving the, the people who are coming up there quite a bit of money, so we're probably half price of what a service would provide.
This is nice, that's a good service to the community.
I, I believe so, absolutely.
Thank you.
650, park maintenance, and that budget, there is a deduct of 14,000 dollars on that.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, 650 is the budget.
50?
50.
50, so 650, park maintenance is a 14,000 dollar decrease there.
Isn't that nice?
But that was a capital equipment you bought last year.
That's where it is, yes.
So, basically, level funded.
Yeah, the, the operating expense is level funded, last year's the capital expense for a top dressing machine for 14,000, so that's why there's a decrease here, so thank you, Mr. Plasko. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good, Mr. Ryan, any questions about any of these categories, Mr. Ryan, we've been asking questions as we've gone along.
I'll just ask my one question I've been asking everyone, the one, people that we're having in tonight are basically the larger departments, if you had to cut 100,000 from the basic DPW budget, what would you cut?
Trash fee.
From your basic DPW budget.
Non-personal, because we don't want to cut services. So, 100,000 dollars.
Yes.
Operating budget.
Yes.
And refuse removal is not part of that.
No.
No softballs.
Don't ask any more questions, it'll get hotter.
We can't, we can't water the grass.
Mr. Plasko, I don't know if we could come up with that number, we provide great services this town, if you want to keep the same services...
That's the answer right there.
We can't, we can't cut anything, we really can't, I mean, people...
You can do it, but it would be a cutting service.
Services would be, really, really would.
The board saw some of the potential cuts that we were looking at, getting rid of summer help, which is not only just getting rid of a jobs program, but those kids do a lot of workforce, they paint hydrants, they, they clean downtown. If we cut out some of the overtime, we would be opening the landfill only once a month instead of twice a month, I mean, so these, these are service losses, we don't just have magic money built in the budget that we can say, well, do away with this and we're spending less money, everything is tied to a service level.
Absolutely understood, I'm trying to draw a picture for the public. Thank you. Thank you.
All set?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark and Sarah gave you the bottle of water?
She did.
All right, the last one is...
Is there any? Yes.
Mr. Mazuka, we'll turn it over to you now for anything you want to cover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer the questions the board has, briefly, the manager's office budget really isn't, doesn't see much of a change.
What page is that?
The, yep. So, similar to most of the general government budgets, there's really no dramatic change there.
We see that salary allocated shift to the Norwood Light Department there.
Correct, and those numbers, incidentally, on that salary allocation are the same numbers we've been using all along, we haven't done, we haven't changed those.
Very good, any questions?
Yeah. Just, Mr. Manager, if I could, just, just a point really, on the page that you had given us, 215, about possible projected budget cuts, 21 to 24, that, that's just a best guess type thing, down the road, we could have cuts.
Right, but if you remember, a lot of those were actually originally in the first pass of the budget. We were lucky that we had some revenue changes and we had some savings in some other areas, otherwise, some of those were going to be this year, we started off the year...
But aren't.
Correct.
Which is a big, big point, that, that, that with it, with the decreases in our general government budgets that have been made, then there, there are no staff cuts.
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Basically happened from increased state aid.
Right, regardless, you know, the rabbit out of the hat, and it's a good thing.
Assuming we get it, remember the recommend, or the advice from the state rep the other last meeting, it was that can't guarantee we're going to keep that million dollars. Right, right, but, but just to clarify, that's, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, have you replaced Debbie Melcher?
Not yet, we're waiting for the vacation sick time payoff to conclude.
Thank you.
Probably, probably June, we'll be able to fill it as of May, but I don't really want to bring somebody on the office in May, when we're busy with town meeting, won't have the time to actually properly onboard somebody.
And everything's working okay?
There have been a few things that have been falling through the cracks, Mr. Chairman, remember a meeting earlier in the year that was supposed to get posted, that didn't get posted on time, that was, so we're, we're, we're muddling through. And we've also, you know, other than me being out of the office, Bernie hasn't taken any time, Sharon hasn't taken any time, so we're, we're hoping to get through another month. Again, we'd be ready to fill it as of the beginning of May, I just don't want to bring somebody on the month we go through town meeting, it's just not a great time to onboard somebody when we're sort of busy dealing with other, all the right ends, and of course, right now, we're actually focusing on getting the HR office staffed and up and running.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, if I could, the facilities situation, is that in the budget?
We have programmed in to bring on the facilities director onto the general government cost, as well as the facilities committee had looked at two positions that we would start mid-year to make our facilities department happen. The school department, the school committee has still yet to agree to the process, my recommendation, if they don't agree to it, would be that we move that money back to our road money, which is realistically where it came from. The idea being that, looking out over the next 10 years, when we talk about finding efficiencies, when you total our facility spending, it exceeds 20 million dollars townwide, I mean, it's the only place we're going to find efficiencies. I've let the board know, let the public know, if you take a look at the selectmen's office, you have a small office supply budget, and you have two people, there's no way to find a big efficiency here, there's no half a million dollars in savings in this office, or in the clerk's office, or in the assessor's office. Our facility is where we're spending millions of dollars a year, year, and we can find those savings. So, the idea is, we don't want to do less in roads, but let's invest here, and over time, we will see more savings, we will save the money over here, and we'll be able to have money to do these other things. If the school committee doesn't want to move forward with it, that's their prerogative, that money should go back to roads, which is where it came from.
So, just to be clear, so you're saying that, that in the budget as it sits, we do have, we do have money if the school committee goes along with it?
Correct.
Where is it, please?
405, 405.
I'm sorry?
That's, that, I, like, all along, I haven't necessarily been the main person in favor of this, but if, if we're able to get it in the budget, it's probably a good thing for our town.
We intentionally chose to sacrifice that, and I know Mr. Plasko and Mr. Maloney made this case at the last budget balancing meeting, we're intentionally sacrificing general government resources, so road money in this particular case, to make this work case, to make this work so that not only is it, the startup is no cost to the school department, it'll actually will save the money out of their budget because we're going to find those efficiencies down the road. This is that last great frontier where we can find savings and manage our buildings better. They have to do what they think is best for the school department. That's their responsibility that they were elected to do. If they don't want to go in that direction, that's their prerogative. But this is us shifting resources around to be strategic in how we spend our money because we will find savings down the road. This is where we can save money. We're putting it all on the line to make this work. I think it's going to work. I think it should work. Many other towns have gone down this road and not just, you know, we use Wellesley as an example. Wellesley has plenty of money, but Franklin has done this. Franklin is similar in size and wealth comparison to us. The town of Maynard has done this, uh, which is a smaller town, but doesn't have the same income level that Norwood does.
Almost every town has done it, except for the very small communities.
Correct. So this is not, this is no longer a new-fangled model that we're trying to push. This is a standard among cities and towns. I think it's time we do it. I don't see how we go to the public and say, we're really going to spend your dollars better when we're not spending them wiser. I'd love to bring a facilities manager on to the town side. I think we'd still see savings in that salary. Then we have two facilities managers for the same fundamental government operation. So it's just a, it's a catch-22. But if we, if they don't want to go forward, that money needs to go back into the road budget, which is realistically where it came from.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think that there should be a facilities manager. And this proposal that's in this budget calls for, uh, a second person? So it's two people?
Well, so what it would be is we would book the facilities manager and his administrative assistant. We move the school staff, move them over, centralize them. So that, that's, but that's not to add the two positions. Originally, most towns have several other positions in their facilities departments. We would be bringing on two positions mid-year. One would be to sort of be assistant director since they're taking on a whole lot more buildings. And then the facilities committee looked at it with the current facilities director, with Paul Ricardi, and said, well, where do we add to save money? And his first reaction was a plumbing position. We're looking to add, um, uh, positions that are going to make an impact on the ground. We're not looking to just hire somebody else to work in an office. We have contracts that we could eventually collapse into working positions and save money there. We want people who can do work on our buildings, not just, uh, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have an engineer and we have an architect and all these other things. I don't know if we'll ever get there. We're looking at people to maintain the buildings. And a lot of these are things that we're spending money on outside contracts for. And to bring somebody in to do it in-house, it doesn't make sense on just one side of the balance sheet or the other. It doesn't necessarily work out economically or financially for just the school buildings or for just the town buildings. I couldn't justify a full-time plumber or a full-time electrician just working on town buildings. But when you have the town buildings and the school buildings together, you're able to do it. I mean, right now, we use an outside electric contractor. I want to replace a light switch, I have to pay an electrician quite a bit of money to be able to, um, to do that. So there, there's efficiencies that could be found over time there. It's just about, you've got to look at all of the buildings to make it worth it.
How many people are online, included in line 405?
So that's technically four positions, but two of those are already existing positions that are just going to be booked to general government as opposed to the school department. So that's a net savings in their budget of about $160,000.
How, how many people does the school department have on their side right now in that, in that concept?
It depends on how you want to look at it. If you're looking at custodians, then in total.
No, 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 management.
So it's just Paul and his administrative assistant.
And so then they're not reflected in these numbers at all?
They are.
So that, these numbers reflect four people?
Correct. Two of them are mid-year positions. We wouldn't bring them on until the middle of the year. The second to last, uh, facilities meeting, the last facilities meeting, the schools did have some concern about when we would start the process because come July, they're very busy, they may be closing the school, and then they've got to get school open. So we said, well, we'll start it January 1st. We'll book it in the general government budget starting, uh, July 1st, owing to the fact that the school department budget is facing a lot of challenges. So it's an effort to try to help their budget out. We'll absorb that cost for the first six months rather than having to split it.
If we looked at a whole year cost of the four people, what would that whole year cost of the four people be? $486,000?
No, it wouldn't be that much money. I'd have to double-check what the add of the two positions would be for the full year. But no matter what, we were planning on not bringing them on until January 1st. Because remember, the budget year starts July 1st. The idea that town meeting would conclude and we'd be able to hire people and get them onboard by July 1st just isn't going to happen. And we're going to want to give the, the management time to get adjusted before we bring on those positions.
Nevertheless, the goal of the four people would cost the town, how much per year?
Correct. Those additional two, so, so, but remember, you're saying the additional four people. You have to remember, two of those positions are already being paid for by the school department. So that's just a shift in the side of the budget they're on. So it's an add of two positions. They're probably $70,000 or $80,000 salaries or when you factor in the overtime for the tradesman position. So it's probably another $80,000 or $100,000 than what's booked in there.
Someplace I read that in the report from the, uh, from the school facilities committee, didn't it say that it would cost $486,000 a year?
I don't know specifically what, um...
I think that might have been that report. I think they were looking at bringing in, um, energy engineers, energy, what do you call it?
Like an energy manager, which, you know, we would do on like a part-time basis.
That aren't talked about here.
Does anybody know how much the school department is paying the two people now?
160.
160?
160, 160 is in that number.
Is in this top number?
Yep.
So, um...
And as I always remind people, if you looked at the total cost of our facilities maintenance and our custodians and all that, it would actually be the third largest department in town.
So say if there, two people are getting paid that now, then if we doubled the 62, then that would give us the...
Close.
Close to the cost. So say it's about $380,000 for the whole department?
Correct.
Okay.
But remember, about 160, that is already being, it's already being paid.
Right. So why wouldn't the school department want to go along with it?
Uh, I, they have some concerns over control, over, um, the budget. You'd really have to bring it up with them. It's, it's a challenge in every community that's done it, and every community that does it says they would never go back to the way they used to do it. But again, they have to focus on their prerogative and we have to focus on, uh, on ours.
So, Mr. Chair, could I please ask one more question?
Sure.
Thanks. So this total budget is about, is this the correct number, 193,304?
193 million.
Yeah, 193,304,000. Is that the total number?
192, isn't it? Target budget.
So that's the key number, the 192 million?
That's the whole town, right?
Okay. So we split with the school department 55, 45?
We split new...
This is everything. This is shared.
Right, right.
This is light department.
Of the money that's not shared, a light department, we split 55, 45?
Generally, yeah.
Generally, right?
New revenues.
That's how we start the budget process.
So when we have, Mr. Mizuko's our last appointment, when do we have the meeting with the school committee?
We've never had a meeting with the school committee, which doesn't mean we shouldn't, but typically they meet with the FinCon and town meeting. We could have a joint meeting to discuss a lot of things, but...
I think it would be good because...
When do we, we haven't scheduled that because we never have in the past.
But since we have so many questions about the budget this year and since they get 55% of the money, then it would seem that that would be a good thing to do so that we could understand these questions that come up about shared activity.
Why might we, uh...
I don't understand the point.
Oh, no, the point would be, so if 55% of the money that's not light department or shared money goes to the school department, the state law says that they have total autonomy over their money, but for informational purposes, for the public and for all of us, it would be good to know about their budget.
Well, they hold...
They do, but only certain people watch the school committee. Only certain people go to the budget balancing committee. Many more people come here.
They also require to hold an actual formal budget hearing that is open to the public to go and attend and ask the budget.
But it's hard for a lot of people to go to a meeting like that and a lot of people, we gave all these departments the chance.
I have no interest in meeting with the school committee about their budget.
Talking about a lot of people, meaning the public, the public watches the school committee meetings, much as they watch our meeting.
So I would like to make a motion that we have a meeting with the school department to discuss their budget.
Motion made any second? Motion fails.
When are we, uh, I'm hoping you're going to tell me not tonight, but when are we going to have some discussion about the capital?
I'm ready right now. If we, I'd like to do it now, yeah. Can we talk about the capital?
We have a capital meeting coming up.
We have it next week. Mr. Mizuko, would you like to talk about the capital improvement plan?
You don't think we should wait till after?
I don't, I do not. If Mr. Mizuko is ready, I think we should talk about it now.
Absolutely. It's up to Mr. Chairman to decide.
Go ahead.
What you would like to, um, what you would like to go over. We've presented the capital plan as well as a proposed funding schedule for the capital plan, a mixer of items out of free cash and borrowing. Do you want me to go through each department? What would you like to, does the board have any, uh, the board's had it now for several weeks. Does anyone have any questions about specific projects, um, recommendations to capital outlay?
Question, please?
Go ahead, Mrs. Donahue.
I'm on the capital outlay committee. None of the capital outlay committee is here or been invited. And we haven't had the meeting that we're going to have on the 21st, so maybe we should have this second after we all meet.
What do we lose by having him talk about it right now?
Well, for one thing, I don't have my copy of his five-year plan.
It's at the back of the budget book.
It's at the back of the book there.
The five-year plan?
There. Go ahead, Mr. Mizuko.
Would you like me to go in brief through the departments? And you can stop me if you have a...
Yeah, very briefly. What are we looking, particularly what are we looking at for the upcoming fiscal year?
Okay, so, uh, public works, fiscal 20, municipal parking lots, we will be looking to do over most of the municipal parking lots.
Okay, page, that's page nine of 78.
Correct. Most of them have lost, uh, have lost, have exceeded their 20-year lifespan. That would be a borrowing project. Traffic signal, sorry.
Do we need to do all those projects now?
We haven't even discussed them.
All those, all those parking, um, lots?
I was just sort of, I mean, it's the, the Talbot Lot, Town Hall Lot, Town Hall Annex Lot, Manhattan Street Theater Lot, Central Bay Street Lot, and the Senior Center Lot, as well as the post office lot. Uh, nine of 78. If you look at it in your...
Different book.
It's where the DPW starts.
Go to the back of the book.
The order is still the same.
Start it there, we'll just take a quick look at some of the stuff right here. Okay.
Question, please?
Nope, not there yet.
Sorry. Square it over here.
We're discussing this year's budget. His projections are for four years ahead.
He's got fiscal year 20. I've asked, I'm just, I just want to talk about fiscal year 20.
We're not talking about all five years, Mr. Mizuko?
Uh, correct. And the municipal parking lots are all scheduled for fiscal 20.
And I guess my question is why?
I think Mr. Plasko's missing a page, it's my fault.
So if you're looking at pavement management, which is a different, um, so pavement management
is just for our road...
That's a street.
That's just our road paving program.
But the same question applies to the five lots that you're recommending.
So, most of them are around the same age and in the same condition. So we figure, instead of just trying to do one lot per year, do the five lots at the same time, you'll get one contractor, one set of bids for all the lots. I mean, you're doing essentially the same work in each lot. Um, and to think of them conceptually as they're one capital asset.
And it's going to be a borrowing, right?
Correct.
Question, please?
Go ahead.
Could the public, please, understand that this is a plan that was created by Mr. Mizuko? It hasn't been voted upon by the capital outlay committee. So it's, it doesn't seem fair to present it as a town plan if the committee that was established to review it hasn't even had a chance to vote on it yet and to...
As far as I'm concerned, we have to take a position, so we have to review it and discuss it. And the capital outlay committee has in recent years started making the recommendations, but it's our job and they recommend how we should pay for it if we're going to do the project.
The budget balancing committee makes recommendations and the whole, whole town follows it. And it's a, it's a community committee. So we're seeing that the capital outlay committee should have some policy too. The capital outlay policy should have some influence on it too. These are just something that Mr. Mizuko created all on his own.
Very good. Mr. Mizuko, will you continue?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So we have municipal parking lots, we have the traffic signals, the Washington and Short Street, and the Senior Center Parking Lot. We've listed it here separately, but that lot really does need to be, uh, done. If we were ever to not do some of the lots, I really do recommend getting the Senior Center Lot done.
So that's total street?
1.770 million. Mr. Howard?
Yep.
Mr. Manager?
Yep.
So Washington and Short Street, that's one, one location of 590,000?
Uh, correct. That's the installation of traffic signals.
No way would we get any state money for that?
Probably not. It's too small of an intersection to qualify for it. Usually for it to be on the TIP program, which receives federal and state funding, you're looking at large projects. Some of these smaller ones, we're stuck, uh, stuck a foot in the bill on our own.
Thank you.
And the Washington and Short Street is more about the pedestrian safety in the area as well.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Um, moving on, the pavement management program is our annual street paving project. So we list out our, uh, sorry, we're moving on to page 12 of 78. We list out the streets we intend to do for road paving. If we get additional money, we'll go beyond this. But remember, we project these roads out for a five-year period. The challenge we face is that we've got to wait until the end of the winter to see if these roads are still in the same priority level as we grade them. Sometimes a road is in decent shape right before the winter and it takes a real beating and vice versa. Sometimes we think, gee, we've really got to do this, uh, this one road, and at the end of the winter, it looks like it's actually not, uh, not that bad.
So that's, it adds up to 859,000, so that doesn't include the $100,000 we, we hope to appropriate.
Correct. That's sort of a good catch-all for if some of these projects end up costing more than that. As we get through them, if the bids come in cheaper, we just add roads from the list to it. But this is what we would like to, at a minimum, get done.
Mr. Plasko?
Is this in addition to the Chapter 90 money?
No, no, this is the actual Chapter 90 money. No, no, this is the actual Chapter Ninety money. If you read through the capital plan, it identifies that, but the total projects, that eight fifty-nine number is actually projected Chapter Ninety money.
So, it's not money that the town has to raise itself?
Correct.
Mr. Plasko, you had a...
Yeah, a while back, we had a discussion about the streets and how to decide what streets we're going to do and how we're going to do them, what kind of curbing, whether we're doing sidewalks, whether we're doing asphalt, whether we're doing cement. We asked the General Manager and the DPW Superintendent to come back with a plan.
Our plan would be, once the fall rolls around, once the spring is concluded, and once we're ready to go out to bid, we would present our plan to the Board of Selectmen as specifically what's going on with each road, so that way you'd be aware of it. This, again, is just based on our five-year plan, but we always sort of prepare that every year. We've got to get through the winter. If these are still the roads we're going to do, then we would bring a more detailed plan to the board, say, well, our plan is that we're going to do berm here or granite here, et cetera.
All right, go ahead.
So, we're going to get that before anything goes out to bid, just in...
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Question, please?
Yep.
Why is this included under Capital Outlay? If we're using the money from Chapter Ninety, please?
If you remember back to the Capital Outlay Committee meetings, we talked about looking at all of the town's capital investments. We own millions of dollars' worth of roads, and we spend nearly a million dollars on them every year, so it's a very poor practice to not have your roads in your capital plan because we're spending a lot of money in it. Your total capital expenditures come from a lot of areas. Earlier, you asked about are there grants for this or are there grants for that? Just because we're spending grant money on something, we should be transparent with the public and let them know the infrastructure that we're maintaining and where the money is coming from for that infrastructure. So, Chapter Ninety, it's not really a grant program, it's actually a reimbursable program, nor is it actual cash we get on hand. We have to submit the project, it has to get approved, and then we get the money back. So, this is a million dollars of the taxpayers' money, even though it's Chapter Ninety money we get from the state for road money, that we're spending on roads, we should be projecting it out, because we're going to get to a point where we should be spending our own direct general fund money on these items, and when we're doing that, we should be listing out to the public what we're doing. We use the same analogy when we talked about our fleets, where we need to look at fleet management, where we don't like to say, well, is a vehicle really capital? Well, as a town, we probably spend seven or eight hundred thousand dollars a year on vehicles, so a bunch of different vehicles at a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars a clip doesn't seem like a lot of money, but our capital investment, our investment in our capital, is exceeding a half a million dollars in vehicles every year.
How do we get the money to pay for Capital Outlay?
It all depends on how the town so chooses. Some items are free cash, some items are grant-funded, some items are borrowed for, some items are rate borrowing. Every capital item is ultimately up to the town how to do it. If you look in the back of the book, there's actually a chart there that states out where we would get the money from, so we should be putting our larger infrastructure projects in there and propose to pay for it by grant funding. CPA projects, for instance, should be in here, we should be planning out what we plan to do and the money coming from CPA. It's about planning, looking out over the future, looking at what the community needs, prioritizing what we need, and then seeing what the community feels they can afford. That's sort of a standard for capital planning.
Mr. Bishop has a question.
One quick question here. On the first street on the list, the third street, which runs from Walpole to Chapel along the side of the park, would that include some kind of berm along the park side?
Once we get through the winter, we'll have a more detailed list of the exact work that'll get done per street, and whether it's granite, whether it's berm, whether there's widening or narrowing. Again, we prepare a five-year pavement management plan, most communities do, where you rate your roads, and it's basically a one-to-five scale, or sometimes you can use a one-to-ten scale, so this is based on knowing the condition of the roads. We then go in and say, well, gee, maybe this road needs to get done here, but we know that there's gas work getting done on, so we're going to push it off. We then, after the winter, sort of chew up the list and say, okay, well, this road fared better, or this road fared worse, and then we get into the details where, okay, it's time to do this type of curbing here, that type of curbing there, and our plan this year is to bring that to the board before we go out to bid with them.
Yeah, because I think it would look a lot better if they had some kind of a dividing line there, berm separating the street from the park. A lot of cars parked up on the side there, that's...
Cape Cod berm looks very attractive.
Doesn't look appropriate. Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Correct, and again, we could, because you could see serious winter damage to certain roads, you could not do four of these roads and have to make a repair somewhere else.
All right, water and sewer.
Two items, three items, sorry, for fiscal twenty, our normal cleaning and lining of water lines through our MWRA grant, that's a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar borrowing. We get that through a zero-interest loan from the MWRA. We're also proposing to do a half a million dollars of water lining, that would be a direct-through-rate recovery, so a direct cash payment. We're looking to speed up the time to get all of our water mains re-lined. I believe the last estimate we had is a little over thirty years before we would complete all the lining in town. We would like to cut that down, because I'm sure in thirty years, there'll be something else we'll have to do. And then we do need to replace some of the meter transmission units for the automated meter reading system. That, again, is a system that's going to just require regular maintenance and repair.
Just so everyone understands too, what you see down below on each page is the projected Capital Outlay by fiscal year. So, up above, you have individual projects, they've been coded, as you can see, WNS twenty, twenty dash twenty dash one, and so forth, and so you can select the items that are in fiscal twenty by looking there, twenty number one, twenty number two, twenty number three, and then on to twenty-one, and so forth, and then down below, you see them broken out, expenditure by year.
Okay. Point on that, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
That's, is that necessarily prioritized, or just the way they got listed? Like the one, two, and three he was pointing out, Chair was pointing out?
The, I'm sorry, I don't answer you. We'll have a detailed list of what actually gets lined out.
If it was an item that we were going to argue, we could only afford one of them. Was the first one, is the first one necessarily the highest priority?
No, no, we didn't arrange the plan that way. We could probably try to do that in the future, but it was really just as the...
Just so we know, it's not that way necessarily.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On your, about the meters?
Yep.
Hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars?
Yep.
So, on every single water bill, you pay for a meter?
We do. That fee gets treated as a revenue to the general fund and then gets split according to the fifty-five, forty-five formula. It really should be booked in the water and sewer fund, however, if we were to do that, it would delete about seven hundred thousand dollars of revenue from the town and the schools, we would then have to make that up somewhere else. So, this is one of those things that at some point in time should be corrected, however, it has not as of yet.
People are paying twice for their meters?
They're not necessarily paying twice for their meters, I wouldn't agree with that.
In two categories, they're paying on every bill, and then they're going to pay on Capital Outlay?
But it goes into revenue.
Right, so, yes, they're paying for it over here, but then they're not paying the same amount in property taxes. Again, we could fix that this year if the board wanted to, we would need to generate about three hundred thousand dollars more in revenue or cut costs on the general government side, and the school department would need to either find another four hundred thousand dollars in revenue or an additional four hundred thousand dollars in cuts. So, something that should be fixed over time, but I don't think that this is the most opportune year to do so.
All right, and then...
Those are fiscal twenty for water and sewer.
Yep.
Fiscal twenty for the cemetery, just design services. As the board knows, we're trying to make sure we properly design and engineer projects before we go to bid for them, to get complete bid-ready documents, so we have a better idea of the total cost of a project, rather than just sort of coming up with a guesstimate. So, that's a twenty thousand dollar project for the cemetery department for design services for work to their building to be done over the next several years. Questions on that?
That's not going to be a borrowing, right?
I'd have to check the funding schedule at the end of the year. Some of these were moved between borrowing and free cash, just because of the...
That's the type of thing that the Capital Outlay Committee is designed to do, where we say, these are the projects we want to do, recommend, should you borrow, should you use free cash, you know, that type of thing.
All right.
Fire department, no equipment for this year for fire equipment, there are some vehicles, we'll get to that later. Page nineteen to seventy-eight, information technology and equipment, there are three projects these, this year for IT equipment, these are three school projects. There's a network switch replacement, a laptop replacement, and desktop replacement. Those are all school IT projects, but we're lumping our total IT together, because, again, we are one community, we're one town, and at the end of the day, it's going to the public, but this is our total investment in information technology in a given year. Next year, we will need to replace desktops townwide, we kind of kicked that project off this year, so there's some serious town IT capital projects coming.
What number is that?
We're on page nineteen out of seventy...
No, I know, replace desk...
For this current year, it's the third project down for the schools. Next year, we'll be doing it for the town.
I saw that, but you should tell the public what it is, three hundred ten thousand dollars.
Yes, in fiscal twenty-one, if you want, we can go through every future-year fiscal project, I was just trying to focus on the current fiscal twenty projects.
Trying to stay on the current one, yeah, that's fine.
If you fast-forward to page twenty-one out of seventy-eight, the Norwood Police Department, two projects for this coming year, this is police equipment, similar to fire equipment. One of them is a replacement of tactical vests and body armor, and the other one is a replacement of tactical helmets. These are items that, in a perfect world, would actually be in the police budget, or they would have enough money in their operating budget. They are really one-time costs, this is not equipment we replace regularly. The police department should have somewhat of a budget to replace some of these equipment. We are looking to replace the plate carriers in the vehicles, as well as the helmets that the police use are twenty-five years old, so it's just they're up for regular replacement. Again, we should have more money for police equipment in the budget regularly, but these are also not common replacements that we make on an annual basis.
Question, please?
Yep.
How come it wasn't included in the police department clothing, equipment, you know, their clothing?
So, that line is already allocated to pay the clothing allowance and to pay for uniforms.
Is that for shirts and pants?
Correct, there's either an allowance, or it's to pay for their actual uniforms, so, again, at eighty-four thousand dollars or eighty-five thousand, four hundred dollars between the two of them, just couldn't absorb it. If we needed to spend eight hundred dollars for new patches or something like that, you can find that in the operating budget. Eighty-five thousand dollars is just not something the chief's operating budget in a normal year can absorb.
In the past, we've got grants for radios, we've got grants for equipment.
Sometimes those are available. Again, we always offer, we always explore grant opportunities for anything we can. The town does do very good in receiving grants, but grants aren't going to pay for everything we need to do. Public safety grants have been drying up over the last ten years. The post-nine-eleven era, there was a lot of grants, they've gotten smaller and smaller. Grant makers and grant agencies generally don't want to pay you for things that you should be doing anyway, they want to do something special or something additional, so the chief has been as aggressive as he can be in looking for grants, but again, there's not agencies out there that say, we just want to replace random equipment here or there. I wish there was.
Mr. Chair, if I might? So, we're going through these, and we're getting an explanation, that's great, but we can't see the full picture. In other words, this is something that, to me, in all likelihood, would be, if we have free cash, and if we don't have free cash, some item's not going to be done, we're not just assuming these are all getting done, right?
Right.
Correct. The end of the plan does have a proposal of how each item would be paid for, some of them are through borrowing, some of them are through free cash. You're right, if there was no free cash, I mean, that's...
Then we'd have to revisit it.
Correct, we'd have to revisit. That's why it would be good at some point to build a cash amount into the budget, to know that we can take care of some of this. I mean, these are, most of these projects, you take these police projects in particular, they're, these are just replacements of existing equipment, so we're not really adding, in a lot of these cases, to anything that we currently have, it's just replacing what we have. We should have a base amount in the budget, but there, again, that comes into competition with everything else. How do I craft that number? Well, that number should be a million dollars, well, I need to take seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from somewhere else, so it's about choices and trying to be strategic and try to sort of keep spinning all the plates that we're doing, as much as we can do with the resources that we have. Further questions on the police equipment?
Oh, sir.
Go ahead.
All right. Page twenty-three, there's no current twenty-year, no FY twenty items for the library, we're going to skip ahead a few projects. If you go to page twenty-seven, it's Copley Middle School, there is a proposed borrowing, one point five million dollars. This is the first phase of the feasibility and design services study for New Copley Middle School. We included this in here, we believe it'll be on the warrant for town meeting. We may not need to actually borrow until the fall, but we didn't want to wait and then only have a special for just this item, if we ended up not necessarily having a special in the fall.
Sorry to interrupt you, I'm sorry, finish that anyway.
Go ahead.
Right up above, a Noah High School, on page twenty-six, we have nothing for fiscal twenty, but just to note that we do have, in the future, design services for field turf and track replacement, and also football field lights and a concession stand over the next four fiscal years after this one.
Correct, and some of those numbers are still preliminary in terms of their design amount, but that's the proposal.
We get a lot of questions about...
When we polled staff and department heads and said, what are your capital needs over the next five years, these were high on those lists, so...
Okay, good.
Twenty's for current building construction, I would say we don't have enough money in there for the concessions.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, the numbers in the out-projected years are always subject to change, and this is also why we're going to engineer and design our projects before we're going to build them, we're not just going to throw a number in there and then say, well, we think it's four hundred thousand dollars, and then find out that we're quite wrong.
Okay, very good, that was the Copley, yes.
Thank you. In regard to those future numbers, football fields and tracks, six hundred thousand, field lights, five hundred fifty thousand, and then, and only in year twenty-four, three hundred thousand. We had a concession stand before, it would seem, that if you're talking about future numbers, that should be first.
We should probably put a engineering process in there, and then, at some point, we're going to have to have that discussion process with the school committee and with the community on what the priorities are. We can move, just because we've programmed a project in twenty-three versus twenty-four, it's a future year out, we can move it up or down.
Yeah, we did that project before, and we abandoned it because it got too expensive.
We have a quarter of a million dollars sitting in an account somewhere for a concession stand, by the way.
I have been so told, so we would need to, we should get the engineering and the whole process done ahead of time. It may actually make sense to do all those projects at once and do it as a borrowing and just get it all done at one time, but we haven't done, at least to my knowledge recently, the actual engineering for the project, and we have to start getting these things designed and engineered in the bid documents before we actually go ahead and appropriate money for them. I think it's a misstep we've made.
Yep, okay.
We're skipping ahead a few years, just to point out, on page twenty-nine to seventy-eight, the elementary schools, nothing programmed for this year, but beginning in FY twenty-one, we do have quite a few costs, that's page twenty-nine out of seventy-eight. If you go to page thirty-two of seventy-eight, this is the public safety building, there are quite a few projects for this year, some of them are smaller projects. Some of it's design services, the community room is in need of an update, it's probably actually our most heavily-used room, there's training in there three or four days a week. The police department actually saves a fortune by hosting a lot of trainings here, where we're able to stick a couple of guys in there for free, because we're hosting it, but the acoustics, the equipment in the room are starting to fall behind, so we do know that that room needs some work, so it's the design for updating that room.
Just one thing, Mr. Mizuko, on your coding of this, I think you've, there've been mistakes here, the project numbers beginning in fiscal twenty-one are, continue to show twenty.
We'll make that update.
Yep, okay, thank you, go ahead.
The, next is the design of the HVAC system, as you know, we're starting to see failure of the heating and ventilating and air conditioning system at the fire police station. We've already replaced some rooftop units, we're expecting to have to replace continued rooftop units. The system is failing at a regular rate, it's time that we look at the whole system, and the whole system probably needs to be replaced, rather than continuing to spend a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars every year or every other year on a rooftop unit. The building is approaching twenty years old, I know we still think of it as the new public safety building, and even when I hear a building built in two thousand and two, well, that's brand-new, well, it's approaching twenty years old, and it is a twenty-four-seven building, and it's important to note that the building does get a lot of use, so, that's a, that's begin the design project. The proposal then will be to replace and repair the HVAC system that'll get us through the next twenty-plus years. It used to be that you could put in a good HVAC system and it would get you fifty years, but the world unfortunately does not build things to last anymore.
All right.
Also, is an upgrade LED lighting on both sides at a projected cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. We do expect to get some sort of a rebate from the light department on that through their program, but we do have to put the cash up front, borrowing up front for it, that will save us costs over time. There's also a, replacing the stainless steel toilets in the holding cells, those are our prisoner holding cells, and the toilets are having some problems, they need to get replaced. It's a prisoner safety issue, it's a prisoner comfort issue that we have to address, it can also cause problems with prosecutions if we're not holding people in facilities deemed acceptable by the state. And then, last but not least, for FY twenty, is design services for upgrading the fire kitchen, I don't know if you've had a chance to visit it, but it was, there have been some challenges with that building to begin with, the fire kitchen is pretty beat up, there's a lot of things being sort of welded together and slapped together, so it's time that we upgrade that. Again, this is just a challenge with maintaining and owning buildings.
Sorry, could you please fix the numbers, what, that's under twenty-one?
The design of the upgrade of the kitchen fire is...
Kitchen, in the book, it's under twenty-one, is that twenty or twenty-one?
Where are you seeing it's under twenty-one?
It's twenty.
It's twenty.
Okay, upgrade kitchen including fire appliances?
Yep, it's fiscal twenty.
That's the construction in twenty-one.
Yeah, the construction is in twenty-one, again...
It's just design, have somebody work out.
The proper process is, is design your project and then build it in the following fiscal year, because by then, when you're going to town meeting for a borrowing authorization, assuming it's a borrowing project, you have completed bid documents in hand, much as the way we did it with the light department.
We would spend twelve thousand dollars in a design for the kitchen?
Correct, that's the estimate.
A design for the kitchen?
Yes, you do need to have, it has to be built to code, you do have to have, it's a commercial-grade kitchen, you do have to have your engineers and architects come in, decide what you're buying and place things out. When you don't do that, you run into unanticipated costs. We did not do that for the dispatch center, and it's been a project, it's been a problem to get that project in under budget, because we didn't pay somebody to properly design a project. We don't save money by skimping on proper engineering and architectural work.
What if we got a contractor that was certified?
When they're doing it for free, they're not doing good work.
No, no, to certified, a certified contractor that installs kitchens in fire stations.
You're going to need to pay somebody...
And that became a real responsibility.
You're going to need to pay somebody to design it, there's no way to not do...
They could, we could hire a contractor that was certified, had a license, to do kitchens in fire stations.
If you gave me a list of those who would like to do it for free, I'd be willing to talk to them.
No, I'm not talking for...
So, I guess, Mrs. Donahue, I'm not sure I understand your point, you're saying we need about twelve thousand dollars is the projected amount for design services, and you're saying you want to pay a contractor, whether we pay a contractor or pay an engineer or pay an architect, we've got to pay to make sure that we're getting a good product.
But in the, the good product should be a part of the contract, and then, in the next year...
Correct.
It says, upgrade the kitchen.
As we've explained at the Capital Outlay Committee a few times...
For a hundred twenty thousand dollars.
We need to, and that number's probably a little low, we need to design the project...
For a kitchen, a hundred twenty thousand dollars?
You're talking about a commercial-grade kitchen, a residential kitchen upgrade is a forty or fifty thousand dollar job, so a commercial kitchen's going to cost you quite a bit more, so we need to design the projects ahead of time, so we have the bid-ready documents and we have a better understanding of what the cost is. We continue to make this mistake where we just want to lump it all in and do it all at once, and that causes problems.
Well, we'll be getting bids on it anyway, won't we?
Correct.
Okay, let's move on.
All right. Uh, any other questions on those projects?
Nope.
That was the last project this year.
No, sir.
All right, if we move the next fiscal 20 project, it starts on page 35. The pagination is a little, um, a little funny. It starts at the bottom for the Civic Center, the page of thirty, uh, page 35 of 78. Um, Bill, you're at the top of the bottom, yours is paginated correctly, this didn't get paginated correctly when it went into the book. Uh, so page 35 of 78, the Civic, the first project there, we're, uh, designing the elevator and again, we're still separating out the cost because we need to get a design. We're then gonna go ahead and, uh, construct the elevator, uh, or re-renovate the elevator. It did fail critically right around election time. Uh, we were in a little bit of a panic because when that elevator fails, it, not only is this our emergency shelter, it's also a voting location, it's no longer, uh, handicap accessible. So, you do need to go through the design process and then after the design process, you go ahead and build the project.
We have about a hundred and eighty-six thousand set aside for this already, right?
Uh, for the town hall elevator, we're talking about the Civic Center.
I'm sorry.
Uh, also is about sixty thousand dollars in design services for repairs to the exterior of the building. As we discussed earlier, we're continuing to see failings on the outside of the building. We need a proper, uh, engineering and architecture firm to come in to investigate it, to give us our options and to design the bid specs to fix the problem so that we don't just spend money patching it and then in five to seven years we're back again patching it. Uh, we have spent money on the Civic, it's an old building, we're gonna continue to spend money on the Civic. It costs money to maintain buildings unfortunately. Those are the proposed projects for, uh, FY20.
All right.
For the Civic.
And then what, the library?
Yep, uh, so it's page 38 of 78 in your book, uh, upgrade LED lighting, so that would be sixty thousand dollar projected cost where we're gonna replace the remaining lights in the library that are not lights, uh, not LED lights with LED lights. There will be a rebate on that, so I anticipate that number coming in less or a borrowing that we'd be able to do less, uh, but we have to pay for the project up front. And again, we'd see some energy savings over time with the LED bulbs at the library.
All right.
Can I stop for a minute, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I actually meant to ask this question when, um, Mr. Ryan was here and you skipped over because you're not asking for any projects, but the DPW Garage Administration Building, we're not seeing any needs for any work down there? Don't have any roof leaks or water coming in under the foundation?
Nothing yet that would warrant being in the capital plan, to my knowledge. Um, this is the new building, just to be, to be clear.
Yeah.
So, it, it should be free of major capital projects for a little while. At least we're halfway through the note.
Okay, so you haven't heard of any needs now?
Uh, no.
Which building we talking about? DPW Garage.
The new one.
The roof, if it's a roof leak, the roof would still be under warranty.
I know, but are we doing anything about it?
We will, uh, we'll make sure it gets addressed. And again, every building has repair needs that it's, if you think it's only a two or three thousand dollar repair need, we, that wouldn't usually make it a leak. Capital plan.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that we're not talking about the future, but under your proposal here, on page 35 of 78, design services for the Carolan and repairs, you have fifty thousand one year and four hundred thousand for the next, so that...
Yeah, there's a big on hold sticker on the town hall project because we're putting all town hall projects on hold until...
I'm only talking about the Carolan?
Correct.
And, and the reason that I'm bringing it up is because it's in the community preservation, the total, for $215,000.
Yep, and has that gone out to bid yet?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we've actually, I don't...
Well, it hasn't gone out to bid, but we have estimates from contractors.
So, numbers in and out year, Mrs. Donahue, are just a placeholder where there's an estimate. So, Mr. Cooper, I believe, put these numbers in when we put the plan together. We've gotten those estimates refined down. If we were taking this project on our own and not paying it through CPA funds, you're gonna want to design what you need to do first and then go forward with it. The numbers come in great for outer years, that's fine, but remember, when we say we're projecting $600,000 in fiscal '24 for a project, that's your initial sort of eye in the sky look at, this is what we think it's gonna cost based on an estimate. As you get closer to an actual project, you go through your design process, which gives you your more accurate cost estimates as to what it's gonna actually cost you. But again, everything is sort of on hold with town hall until we come to a conclusion about what we want to do with the building, although the Carolan, I think we would do one way or another.
Okay. Yep, we're good.
Uh, moving on, page, uh, we can finish the library. The next fiscal 20 project we have, uh, the airports project for this year is vegetation control and the wildlife fence, uh, looking to replace that. We're programming in ninety thousand dollars, the proposal would be to pay that out of free cash. Um, this is our 5% towards a state and federal matching grant, so it is roughly a million-dollar project. Um, it's, this is just our match towards that project. Uh, if we move to page 45, uh, we do have programmed in here the acquisition of the Saints Lot. Uh, there's a proposal to pay for that out of CPA funds, we're seeing if that's possible. I would recommend that we go ahead and acquire that lot, uh, if we can, whether or not we can use CPA funds for it. Moving ahead to page 47, the DPW Fleet.
Now, excuse me?
Yep.
We've got that under parks, playgrounds, open space, but I don't know if Mrs. Donahue has any more information, but I thought I understood the CPA discussion to be around that becoming, um, conservation land.
That would sort of fall under the open space, uh, category.
That's different than parks and playgrounds, different control, different body has control of it, different things you can do or not do.
Uh, it does, this is just sort of, where would you put anything that falls under those general categories? We wouldn't have a separate conservation land category, so is it a park, is it a playground, is it open space?
Okay, I, okay, I guess I'm taking the conversation, I understand, that's how we lump things here for conversation to, and to identify them, but I guess my point is, do we have a druther? Do we care whether this is recreational land? Do we care whether it's conservation land? Do we care whether it's airport land?
I think if you, my thought is you're gonna want some walking trails. Um, so that's the thing, when we say recreation land, that could mean, I think you'd absolutely want walking trails.
Passive recreation.
Correct, I don't think we're looking at it for ball fields, for instance.
That's what it would be, passive recreation.
At least that would be my recommendation, ultimately it's up to town meeting.
I agree with you on that.
All right.
And on the 21, the cord rubber, that's coming under the community preservation as well.
Yeah, it may, and some of those projects will come off. Again, the plan will get updated annually as projects do come on and off and other funding sources are identified, but that's an example of a project that we likely need to do anyway. Maybe if we delay it a year or two, waiting for CPA funds, that would be one thing, but there are otherwise projects we, we need to be looking at.
They're on this year, we're voting on them tomorrow night.
Yep. Um, the, uh, page 46 is just the public works fleet, three vehicle replacements this year, a ten-wheel dump truck, a utility truck and an asphalt dump truck, uh, totaling $265,000. These are again, items that we should have about $300,000 in the DPW budget for their regular fleet replacement. It just comes into conflict with everything else we need to add into the budget. We've included the complete fleet schedules in the, uh, in the capital plan.
I like that, yeah.
Oh, nice.
And, uh, they'll, they'll eventually, it'll be a little bit cleaner next year, it'll be in one, sort of one single fleet format, we just sort of, uh, did the data dump for what's there. Uh, the cemetery fleet, you can see there's actually not much in there but the rider mowers for $9,000. There again, that project would, really should be in the operating budget, but when we look at what we're spending on our fleets and our equipment in total, it's an enormous amount of money. They have some larger-cost vehicles in out years and of course, their fleet is included. Uh, if we skip ahead, we are at page 53, which is the fire and ambulance fleet, uh, three vehicles, replacing squad three with a, uh, what's called a brat truck or a brush rapid attack truck, uh, medical assist response vehicle and a replacement of the rescue boat. The current brush truck needs to be replaced and what we're actually proposing is to replace it with a, a modern brush truck, but also a medical response vehicle. And we discussed this a little bit earlier where the ambulances are really designed to retrieve a patient and to transport a patient, so sometimes there's a chance where, uh, medical service can be rendered without an ambulance and that's what we want the medical response vehicle to be. Right now, the third medical vehicle that we send is actually usually the brush truck. Um, so sometimes you'll see an accident and then the brush truck is rolling up, it's not an efficient use of resources because the brush truck is a quarter of a million-dollar piece of equipment and, uh, it's very costly to send out, but that's our third vehicle. Replacing it with a cheaper, it's effectively an SUV, gives us the ability to respond to a medical issue where instead of sending a truck to, to firefighters on it, you're sending a much cheaper vehicle. It also allows us to hold, uh, equipment and materials for a triage event, so if you ever had to respond to, let's say, a mass casualty event or something like that, you're able to respond with this vehicle and you're able to pull supplies for it instead of showing up with a brush truck, which is just really not effective for a medical call. Uh, and again, the brush truck is a very expensive, complex piece of equipment that somebody has a broken leg and we have both ambulances and we can't get a, we can't get a response, we're gonna send somebody, you send a police officer and the brush truck, we just, we'd like to stop sending the brush truck medical calls. Um, but I think Mr. Howard made the point earlier, do you always need to send the ambulance? This is an example of sometime where we wouldn't need to send the ambulance or sometimes if you have a large community event, instead of having the ambulance on standby that you can't send out, you can have the medical response vehicle there that can provide some treatment from the vehicle, because remember, the ambulances are really designed to transport the patients.
They used to and maybe at certain times, depending on what's happening with the equipment, actually send them to the fire truck.
Right, we'd like to do less of that, especially with the, the brush truck, it's just a costly piece of equipment that, um...
Don't we have three ambulances?
We, we do have a spare, um, it's not routinely, um...
Right, but I thought we had one in house.
Yep, we, we do, but this is sort of, again, if you had that, that can somebody respond or it's a slip and fall.
Or desperate type thing, they'll send that out.
Exactly, it's, it's another piece of equipment.
Or one of the others is constop.
Exactly. Uh, and again, it, it, it's just cheaper than sending the brush truck, which is just an expensive piece of equipment. So, three vehicles for the fire and ambulance fleet. Here again, we're, vehicles as individual pieces tend to be cheap. Um, in total, we spend seven, eight hundred thousand dollars on average every year on vehicles. Uh, their fleet schedule's included as well. We did include the police fleet in here even though we built it into the capital budget and when you read the finances...
Can I just, uh, town, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yep.
The, if I look at the fire department, uh, equipment replacement and refurbishment schedule, FY20, I see squad number three, SKID, Univec, Utility, Chevy, uh, that's, that's 260,000, so that's, that's my, my brush truck and my medical, uh...
Correct, the MAR is, the medical response vehicle is an add, so that's why it doesn't appear currently in the, uh, in the fleet vehicle. We just want to spend less money on sending the MAR out as opposed to a quarter of a million-dollar brush truck or $200,000 brush truck.
It's actually 280 for this year, isn't it?
280 is the total with including the rescue boat replacement.
But I'm, what I'm saying is the, the squad number three is a $260,000 item.
It's, 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 we believe it's 200, the 60 was the number that was lumped in to make it match, that's the MAR vehicle.
Okay, so do you want the MAR vehicle?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I'd rather send out a $60,000 vehicle that's easy to replace than a quarter of a million.
Okay, no, no, I get the point, so we'll just, we'll just have to add the MAR vehicle into the schedule here and break it out.
Correct, the schedule's what we currently own, so if we acquire it next year, you'll see the MAR on there.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, page 56, the police fleet, even though the, uh, cost of that is included in the, um...
Operating budget.
In the operating budget, we've included in here because again, our total investment in the towns fleet, forgetting about the multiple departments we have, is close to a million dollars a year. The police fleet schedule is in here, we are replacing four a year, I, I'd ultimately like to get us up to five or six a year, but four's where we can hold, um, hold our own.
Okay.
So, why, why is it in here?
It, it's still, when, a capital improvement plan is looking at your total capital improvements, your total capital investment, we're spending close to a million dollars on our fleet. If we just pull this out of here, your capital plan doesn't actually show what you're spending your capital on. So, regardless of the funding source, your capital plan should be your capital investment. One police cruiser may only spend, cost $40,000, but we spend 200 grand a year and over the five-year period, we're projected to spend over a million dollars on police cruisers. And again, our fleet, the town owns a fleet of vehicles, we have multiple departments they're assigned to, that fleet we spend close to a million dollars a year on. So, we want to make sure we're being transparent with the public and saying, look, it, we're spending a million dollars a year on vehicles, it's spread out across half a dozen departments.
But it's 194,000 dollars from the operating budget.
Correct, and the actual summary tells you that that's coming from the operating budget.
Very good.
I know it's a different system, I'm just trying to get us to conform with not just best practices, but common practices for capital planning across the country.
Very good.
Uh, if we go to page 59 out of 78, this is our school transportation fleet, uh, the proposal's to replace both a wheelchair van and a Ford F-150 van. Their fleet is fairly simple, it's roughly two vehicles per year, uh, occasionally they hit a third vehicle, so about a hundred thousand dollars there. Their fleet schedule's included.
Are there, are the, uh, school departments, uh, vehicles coming out of the school department operating budget?
Uh, the proposal, I believe, to fund those is free cash.
Let's see, okay.
So, if you go to page 64, uh, that shows the funding summary, uh, 486,000 dollars free cash, 2.9 million in borrowing, 629,000 dollars in cash rates, uh, 194,000 dollars in the operating budgets, uh, 300,000 dollars in CPA funds with the asterisk that that's subject to, of course, the CPA committee approving and town meeting approving, uh, 859,000 dollars in chapter 90 funds and 600,000 dollars through rate borrowing and then I have an honor there for 1.5 million, that would be the borrowing for the middle school, but we would actually be doing the authorization before the borrowing, uh, but that's a separate MSBA project. If the whole project goes forward, part of that would be reimbursable under the project.
This is what you just mentioned, I'm sorry, the...
Uh, the, the 1.5 million there, that's the middle school borrowing.
Oh, yes, yep, yep.
Uh, so that's the summary of where the items would be paid for. The next section is the debt service analysis, so this projects sort of what the impact on the debt service would be.
Yep.
Mrs. Donahue, do you have a question?
Yes, please. So, this is the plan that you hope that the Capital Outlay Committee...
This is the plan that you...
Excuse me, I hadn't finished.
Sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, I hadn't finished, sorry. This is the plan that you hope that the Capital Outlay Committee will agree to when we meet on the 21st?
I would suggest, say, that this is the proposal that the town manager and the department heads have for Capital Outlay.
Thank you.
A hope makes it sound like it's, it's, uh, you know, not a, uh, not the type of document that it is. I mean, certainly hope that they would do it and town meeting will go for it, but this is the proposal from the staff to you, to the Capital Outlay Committee.
Thank you.
Uh, after the summary for fiscal 2020, you have the debt service analysis. This just shows where our debt service analysis is going for, uh, and what the impact will be for these particular projects and how that would decrease over the next several years and, uh, the individual projects as they're borrowed out. You'll then go through our six appendices, we have a previous year expenditure update, the detailed proposed funding schedule, capital projects deferred, unaddressed capital, horizon capital and understanding of the project numbering system, I can go through those in detail if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, but that is your discretion. Uh, once the Capital Outlay has made a final recommendation and so has the Board of Selectmen, this will get updated with that and then this will go into town meeting's package.
Just looking at the debt schedule, we, uh, at the bottom of page 65, so we total with that, start with total outstanding as of June 30th, 105 million dollars. What I see subsequent to that in 2021 and so forth is additional, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Must be additional as planned, okay. And so, at the very, when I turn the page, I realize it'll be better paginated when we vamp it.
Correct.
So, now I'm looking down below at 489,463, that's additional PNI.
Correct.
Okay, over, okay, and that's, uh...
That's for, what's proposed for borrowing this year. So, that, that's what would get added to the debt service schedule and that's how it would decrease, does that, so that's on top of what the rest of the debt is for that given year.
Right.
So, somebody would want to say, all right, we're borrowing 2.9 million dollars, what's that an impact? It's about 489,000 dollars a year.
Right, okay, very good, Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, reviewing it again, uh, free cash, 486,900, borrowing 2,921,000 dollars. Question please, if the operational override passed as proposed, what, what would be the general government's side for the income for the year under the operational override?
That's not related to these numbers.
But what would it be?
So, separately, we're now going to discuss the override, you'd like to know if the override at 5.95 million passes, what's the general government's share of that? So, built into that number is, uh, there's, uh, about 250,000 dollars for road money and 300,000 dollars for snow and ice deficit. There's also in the first year, 700,000 dollars for the override stabilization fund, that's how we get the numbers to balance over five years because the desire was to make sure that the override lasted for five years, that we weren't just solving a one-year problem and facing a gap the next year, so a significant portion of that. But it's also important to remember that that 5.95 million dollars in tax revenue also grows at 2.5% each year for which both the town and the school will benefit from that financially.
So, we would be saving that money in the account and getting interest on that money in the account, but in addition to the, we would still be borrowing, um, the almost 3 million dollars for these proposals?
Correct.
So, okay, thank you.
All right, you want to wrap it up?
Uh, yeah, did you want me to go through any of the appendices or...
Uh...
Just, I'll point out number two real quick is just, uh, the proposed funding schedule, so that's if you want to look at a specific project and specifically where the, uh, funding for it is coming from, so if you want to say, what's our proposal to pay for, uh, the brush truck, it's 200,000 dollars out of borrowing.
Okay.
We'll fix the pagination for town meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. It was pretty front-loaded in fiscal 20, uh, but that's sort of generally the way it goes in these plans.
You're projecting out five years, but your, your current year is always the one where you have the most items.
Okay. And that's for everyone's contemplation. Uh, all right, very good, any more questions on that?
No, sir.
All right. Well, that should wrap up our budget hearing for this, uh, for this evening and this year. Pending further questions, we just have a few other items on the agenda for tonight, we'll get this done in just a couple of minutes, all right?
I have an extensive report.
What's that?
Just kidding.
Okay, uh, new business, item number one, Burn Boot Camp submitting request for a one-day all, uh, AAB license for Thursday of, uh, March 14th.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, made.
Second.
And seconded, anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Item number two, Noord League of Women voters submitting request to use Noord Police and Fire Department Community Room on Thursday, March 14th at 7:00 PM for a general meeting of the members.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, made and seconded, anything further? Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Unfinished business, item one. Abdul N. Schuman, 100 Winfield Street submitting application for a Class II Auto Dealer License. Public hearing required. This was tabled from last week as a result of concerns over the language on the, on the permit given by Mr. Schubert. So we have his revision here and just asking if the board is satisfied with his revised language. If so, do we want to move toward a public hearing?
Motion to set the hearing.
Second.
Motion to set the hearing made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, let's see. That concludes everything here now. Mr. Mizuko, anything else from you? You've talked a lot, but you might have more, more to say.
No, sir, I agree, I've all said.
Listen, did you have a good time in wherever you were?
Yes, I did. A lot of good stuff to bring back.
I want to thank you, I got a gift here. Is this from you?
It is.
I love it, it's wonderful. And this thing, what's this thing here?
That's a merlion. It's actually the symbol of Singapore. There's a merlion and a scarf. I'm not saying which one is for you or which one could be for your wife, but you can so choose.
Okay, a mermaid, a merman and a merlion.
This was from Dext, wasn't it?
Very good.
From my visitor, this is, this was from the visitor of Kanee.
All right, I also received a gift from Mr. Mizuko. Mr. Mizuko, this, can we see this on camera here at home on television? Can you tell me what this is, Mr. Mizuko?
Sure, that is actually a stone from the River Kwai where there was a bridge that